Can you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance is required of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing, we have our invocation being given to us by Jane Keller this evening. Please go ahead.
All right. Dear honey father, we just come to you tonight humbly to ask that you bless the mayor, the city council members, and our chief of police in this city. We pray that you would give them wisdom as they go over all the different issues of the city, that you would give them understanding of what the people need. And I would just pray that you would just bless this city above all that you can ask or think, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, may be seated. As we get going this evening, I want to first of all announce that Item 20B will not be considered on tonight's agenda. So if you're here for 20B, you can go home early if you choose to do so. So with that, I'm going to call on some speakers that want to make presentations. First is from the office of Congressman Harley Ruda, please.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight, I really appreciate it. My name is Kate Allegria and I'm from Congressman Harley Ruda's office. I just wanted to let you know that in my portfolio, I have housing, homelessness, water in the city of Santa Ana. So if you have any issues that are tied into federal issues or anything you'd like me to bring forward to Congressman Harley Ruda, I'm the point of contact. And again, my name is Kate Allegria. I can leave my contact information for you if you'd like.
Why don't you leave your contact information with a clerk?
Okay.
And if anybody requests anything, we'll make it available to them.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Next presentation from the Red Star Voters, talking about Orange County Vote Centers beginning in 2020. And make sure you speak into the mic real loud, please. Go ahead.
Got it. Thank you very much for inviting me to speak tonight. My name is Jackie Wu. I'm the Community Outreach Manager for the Orange County Register of Voters Office. We do have a presentation that I will click on. All right. All right, great. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to talk about the Vote Center Transition that will be taking place in Orange County, starting in the March 2020 Presidential Primary Election. And to give some background information, it starts with legislation. So the Voters' Choice Act was passed by the state in 2016. The Voters' Choice Act authorized specific counties, including Orange County, to conduct Vote Center Elections, which is different from what we currently conduct, which is considered polling place model elections. And in the Vote Center Model, every registered voter will receive a vote-by-mail ballot. Polling places are replaced by Vote Centers, and we have ballot drop-off boxes located throughout the county. In Orange County, the Board of Supervisors unanimously voted to move Orange County to the Vote Center Model in February 2019, and since then, we've been working to prepare for that transition. All right, just to give a little history on voter trends in Orange County, previously, you were only able to request a vote-by-mail ballot if you met certain requirements. However, that changed in the early 2000s, and since then, we've seen a 6,507% increase. You can see that in 2002, it was less than 200,000, and as of the November 2018 election, we had over 1.1 million voters request a vote-by-mail ballot. So the trends are there that are suggesting the move to the Vote Center Model is a natural progression of where voter behavior and voter trends are moving anyways. All right, just to reiterate, under the Voters' Choice Act or Vote Center Model, every registered voter receives a vote-by-mail ballot, and you can return it either by mail, which now you no longer require postage, it's postage-paid on the return envelope. You can drop it off in person at a Vote Center, you can also drop it off at any ballot dropbox. In addition, in the polling place model, polling places were only open for one day, on Election Day. However, in the Vote Center Model, Vote Centers will be open up to 10 days before Election Day and then Election Day, but that's only at select ones. All right, to go over a little bit about Vote Center Security, because we know that is top of mind, in the Vote Center Model, paper rosters where voters check-in would be replaced with electronic check-in that provide real-time updates. If you've ever visited one of our early Vote Centers, you've seen this in action. We will have a higher-controlled chain of custody. In the polling place model, we recruited volunteers to serve as poll workers. However, under the Vote Center Model, we'll have Vote Center Employees control that chain of custody. Additionally, we'll have enhanced security measures for vote-by-mail ballots. On the envelopes, we're adding additional legal language. Also, we'll have barcodes that we'll be able to track from the moment it leaves our office, gets picked up by the U.S. Postal Service, arrives at your door, and when you send it back to us, you can also confirm that it's been received by our office. All right, so what are Vote Centers? So they act kind of like polling places, where you can do, where you can vote in person, either on a paper ballot or an electronic ballot. In the polling place model, voters were assigned to a specific neighborhood polling place. However, in the Vote Center Model, a voter can vote at any Vote Center. So for example, if you live in Santa Ana, but you happen to be visiting in Anaheim or Dana Point, you can vote at that local Vote Center instead. And these Vote Centers, again, will be open for multiple days and hours. Specifically in Orange County, 38 locations are planned to be open for 11 days, including Election Day. And then in the last four days, three days, including Election Day, there will be 188 locations open. So what are some services that you can receive at a Vote Center? You can register, update your address, or change your party. You can vote in person or drop off your ballot. You can get a replacement ballot, receive language assistance, or use an accessible ballot marking device. These are a lot of services that previously voters had to go to our headquarters in Santa Ana, at the corner of Grand and McFadden, and usually that required a long line, especially on Election Day. However, now at these Vote Centers, you can go to any of these and be able to handle all these services, instead of being redirected, which then voters sometimes feel that, you know what, it's not worth it. However, now at these Vote Centers, they can just handle it all there. Here's a quick table comparison showing the differences between the polling place model and the Vote Center Model. You can see there are a lot of benefits under the Vote Center Model. For example, well, both of them will have electronic voting units, you can drop off your ballot at any site and have accessible voting. But now, at the Vote Center Model, you'll have ballot on demand. So in the past, in the polling place model, if you went to a polling place that wasn't the one that you were assigned to, you were provided a provisional ballot. However, under this model, we can give you specifically the ballot that you're supposed to receive, so you can vote on all of the contests that you're eligible to vote on. You'll have secure electronic check-in, where we'll have real-time updates, we can check whether you've already returned your ballot, or if you are registered to vote. We'll have most provisional ballots eliminated, this is the case that I was referring to, if you went to a polling place that wasn't the one that you were assigned to. We'll have trained employees that'll have a longer period of training. Instead of just three hours for poll workers, we're looking at something closer to one week of training for employees. Voters can vote at any location, there'll be multiple days to vote, and we anticipate in the long term that it'll be a reduced cost for the county. Okay, so we talked a lot about Vote Centers, but we also need to talk about ballot dropboxes, because that is going to be a big expansion. Currently, if you've visited our office in Santa Ana, you've seen the ballot dropbox right outside. It's bright, it's colorful, it's large, and we're looking to expand that up to 110 ballot dropboxes throughout Orange County. They'll be secure, accessible, and locked. They'll be conveniently located, we're looking for places throughout the county now, and we're assessing different places. They'll be open for 30 days, including Election Day, and available to the public 24/7.
Let me interrupt you just for a second. I want to mention that Items 55A, B, and C will be pulled off the business calendar today by staff. So if there's anybody on the audience that wants to address Item 55A, B, or C, it's not going to happen this evening. Please continue. How much longer do you think you have?
I'll be quick.
Okay, please continue.
All right, thank you. So this is an image of what a ballot dropbox would look like. It is military-grade, we've had, you know, very concerns from the public, you know, how would it survive if someone, if a car hit it? We've actually had that happen in the last election, we had a new car, or truck, hit it, and the truck had more damage. So we feel very confident in sending it out. In that slot, you can only fit about two ballots at a time, and we're doing our best to find locations that will have camera coverage. Okay, again, this is just the voting calendar to show that we're expanding the opportunities for voters to cast their ballot. 29 days before Election Day, ballot dropboxes will be open, and we start sending out vote-by-mail ballots. 10 days before Election Day, we start opening that 38 Vote Centers. And then going into the last few days before Election Day, all 188 Vote Centers are open. And then, of course, Election Day. And then, of course, we're on social media, so we encourage you to follow us. We have a website that's dedicated to the Vote Center Transition and Rollout, ocvote.com/votcenter. And thank you. I have available for questions if there are any...
Thank you. Is there any questions from any council members? Councilmember Iglesias?
You mentioned that you're going, you mentioned that you're going to have different dropboxes, what locations are you considering?
We're looking at everything. We're starting with looking at public facilities, so the city of Santa Ana has been wonderful, we've been working closely with both the City Clerk's Office and the Community Services Office to find locations, we're currently assessing different spots. However, all of these assessments take hours, because we're looking at ADA, we're looking at, you know, as the proximity to parking, proximity to public transit routes, so if you have any suggestions, we're more than open, we want to take them and we want to hear them.
Okay, but are still the, I would say, you know, where you go to vote, the voting places, they're still going to be at public places, like the schools and stuff?
We are, we're prioritizing looking at public facilities first, but we're also open to private retail centers, so popular shopping centers. In November 2018, we had one in Five Points Shopping Plaza in Huntington Beach, as to see how it would work in a private shopping plaza, and we're open to those too, if they are there and they're available and interested in being a Vote Center.
Okay, and then for the new way of voting, I guess, is it going to be available for this special election?
No, so we are having a special election, as you're mentioning, on November 5th, for the city of Santa Ana and Santa Ana Unified, but this wouldn't take effect until March 2020.
The March primary?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And that's a good reminder for folks that the Presidential Primary Election is being moved up to March 2020 rather than June.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions from the council members? Thank you very much, we appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, this, tonight we're going to acknowledge the Orange County Fire Authority Explorers. How you doing? Go ahead and form up right here. Thank you, everyone, go ahead and form, I guess two lines right here would be fine, you can come on in. Recently, I had the honor of attending the Orange County Fire Authority Explorers graduation a few weeks ago, and I've been, I'm on the Fire Authority Board, so I've seen a few of the firefighter graduations, and it's something else, it's a sight to see, it's very, very impressive. Then I go to the Explorer Academy graduation, and wow, same thing. I saw people, the explorers rappelling off of the buildings, and fighting fires, tearing up cars, you know, to get trap people out, they were, see, I have a few things written here, they were using the chainsaws, and climbing the aerial ladders, gearing up, very rigorous academy they attended. I'm very happy to be part of the Orange County Fire Authority Board, and I just want to recognize all the young men and women here. How many graduated the academy recently? There you go. Can I get applause for the modifications? I'm a big fan of these programs, just like the Police Explorers and the ROTC programs, because these programs teach mainly leadership. They talk about goal-setting, teamwork, integrity, all kinds of leadership traits, loyalty, and things of that nature, things that, you know, our leaders are made of. And so I'm very, very happy to be here with all of you today, and if we could have Mr. Sarabia come forward to say a few words regarding the program?
Good evening, my name is Rudy Sarabia, I'm a firefighter parabetic at Station 75. So a little bit about the program, it's for any young adult between the ages of 14 and 21, and we have Explorer Nights on Tuesday nights from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., where they get the exposure like Mayor Potem Viegas was talking about. And to get involved in the program, you can go on ocfa.org and get the Explorer application, and drop it off at Station 75, where then we can process, so they can be fire explorers. So over time, they'll be able to do ride-alongs at any station in the city, and get real-life experience, and working side-by-side with firefighters, and get to be on the engine or the fire truck and get the real-life experience, and see the calls firsthand. So thank you again for your guys' support, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I'd also like to ask Chief Jim Henry to come forward, he is the Division Chief for Santa Ana, and we also have dispatcher Sammy Soto. You going to take photos? Okay, great. Thank you, Chief, for joining us. I have some certificates here for the explorers, if you could just bear with me for a quick second. Jimenez? Kimberly Jimenez? Catherine Rosso? Eric Sal? Perez? Giovanni? Mondrigas? Jasmine? Jacob Brown? Nathan Martinez? Kyle? Israel Regalto? Yousef DeLores? Andrew? Luis Borretto? Andres Franco? And Eva Perez? Also, Jose Villa. Woo! Thank you, everyone, let's get a photo. These guys are so humble, I swear to you. Come on in a little bit. I can have Councilmember Iglesias come forward for the next presentation.
Well, for me, it's a great honor and a privilege to recognize this wonderful young lady in front of me. As you all know, I used to serve on the school board, I served for six years, and Dr. Stephanie Phillips was my superintendent. And I am very proud of everything that you've accomplished with the Santa Ana Unified School District. You took it to the next level, that, in my opinion, you know, you took it to the next level, and also, in the opinions of many, many parents and staff, I know they share the same sentiment. So we call her Dr. Phillips, well, we could call her Stephanie. I'm going to share a little, a little bit about her, but then I would want for her to share more about the things that we've done in SAUSD, and to elevate it to that next level. So Dr. Stephanie Phillips first became the Superintendent for Santa Ana Unified School District in August of 2016. She brought with her 19 years of experience in educational leadership. Dr. Phillips has confidently led the seventh-largest district in California, and the second-largest employer in the city of Santa Ana. In addition to her work here in the city, Dr. Phillips also serves on several advisory committees, which is to inform state and national platforms, such as the California School Boards Association, the Superintendent Advisory Council, and also the advancement via individual determination, and those are just, just to name a few, and I know you're going to share more with us. So Dr. Phillips has been a strong leader here in the city of Santa Ana, she has served as a role model to those within our community. And not only is she our superintendent, but I know you're also a resident of Santa Ana, so I want to thank you for that, because you're invested in this city and with our kids. Dr. Phillips' resolve and determination have proven to be of great value to not only the students of Santa Ana Unified School District, but as to the community at large. So we, the City Council and the city of Santa Ana, thank you, Dr. Phillips, for your service to our community, and also particularly for the service that you've provided to our youth and our parents. So thank you so much, and I know the reason we're acknowledging her, I don't know if you guys know, but she is retiring, and she is leaving us, but I'm hoping you come back. Yeah, so maybe you can follow me here to City Hall. So, Dr. Phillips, this is given to you in recognition of your outstanding contributions to our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Iglesias, and City Council, and the mayor. This is really an honor for me, it has been an honor to serve Santa Ana Unified School District and the city of Santa Ana as well. The students here are second to none and deserve the very, very best, and what I hope that we've been able to achieve together has really moved us toward getting to that best. Obviously, there are a lot of things that we still wish to accomplish for our children, but the upshot of it is, is things are being left in good hands, and we're moving forward, and that's the important thing. No one leader is irreplaceable, no, no program is going to be the magic bullet, it takes us all to move us forward for our kids. Some of the things we've been able to accomplish in Santa Ana Unified with the board and the wonderful staff that we have are, you know, we've, we've had world-class schools, we've been nationally recognized with our improvements that we've made throughout our systems, we have all kinds of alphabet soup that I won't bore you with tonight, but just know that our schools are being recognized nationally through U.S. News &amp; World Report, through the California Department of Education, and through the U.S. Department of Education. We are moving our students forward, they are reading at higher levels than ever before, they are doing mathematics and science, project-based learning, and programs that you and I would have never seen in our schools when we were in elementary and high school. So it has been such a pleasure to live in this community, to work here, to serve here, and I'm just very grateful that this, this leadership in this city, and the, and the parents, and all of the community comes together on a regular basis for our kids, because that is my mission and my passion. So thank you very much for this acknowledgement.
Good afternoon, everyone, we wanted to call up the Assistance League of Santa Ana to recognize them for all the good community work they do in our city. I was a firsthand witness last month, it was interesting, because I had never been to this location off of First Street, and I was invited out to volunteer at some part of their, their back-to-school community events that they put together, and I was brought to tears, and just the amount of work that they do in our city with our, with our local schoolchildren. There were, maybe the, for the hour and a half that I was there, there were about 30 kids that came by with their families. They got uniforms, shoes, backpacks, underwear, socks, school supplies, all for the, for the, kind of like what they're holding there for the new school year. And the reason why I got so emotional is because I got home, and I told my mom all about it, I was like, "Mom, you wouldn't believe what you're doing, you know, they're giving away all these things to kids, and it's all volunteer work and, and charity." And she was like, "You know what, this could have been very helpful," when I was, you know, a single mom raising three kids on her own, so I thought of how far this goes with every family in Santa Ana that you guys help, so from the bottom of my heart, thank you, you know, it's, I don't think it's appreciated enough. I was kind of upset, I didn't know more about it, so I'm happy that, to be here, to recognize you guys for all the work you do. Whenever you guys need more, more volunteers and have free time, please let me know, I'll be there. I was actually happy, the day that I was there, Chief Valentin's daughter was actually also there volunteering, so that was also nice to see, that, you know, there's a lot of, of members of our community going out and giving their free time on a Saturday morning to volunteer, so thank you. Councilmember Sarmiento?
Thank you, and one of the things I think that the council member didn't mention is that when we both arrived, what they, what they did first is put us to work. So we started putting these packets together, and the backpacks, and serving families, which is what we all take a pleasure in, right? And so we just wanted to applaud you and thank you on behalf of a grateful city, so let's give them all a big round of applause. You know, this is just a small representation of all the volunteers, because as the councilman said, I know our chief's daughter was there, we had a lot of different people, I see somebody who's been working hard, Richard Santana, who is everywhere in the city, was also there putting things together, but it was just a very nice way to sort of, at least I came in at towards the end of summer, and you see that people are getting families ready for school. And so they thought about things like, you know, underwear, socks, hygiene kits, things that you normally wouldn't, you know, think of, because most, you know, efforts are for backpacks, or maybe a shirt or something, but you don't think about those really sensitive items that you need. So this was a very thorough, comprehensive effort, so let me tell you a little bit about them. So we have here Susan Dobek, who's the president, Maggie Hart, who's the past president and outreach committee member, Tao Tran Chang, who's the Food Pantry Chair and Outreach Committee Member, Lisa Solomon, of course, who is the Chair of Operations School Bell and Principal of Madison Elementary, Go Madison, Priscilla Cloud, who's the Vice President of Membership, and Judy Fein, who's the Chair of Strategic Planning. So, you know, that's just a little bit of what they do, but it's not just children that they serve, they serve families and seniors. It's an incredible, incredible facility, when you go in there, you realize that they have just a spectrum of different goods and items that families need, and at all levels, all age groups, so it's a really amazing site. And the Santa Ana Chapter functions, and it probably has one of the best standards of nonprofit governance. The ALSA has operated charitable programs here in town for the past 81 years, right? So we've been, you guys have been here with us for quite a while, and Operation School Bell, as I mentioned, is the signature program, and it provides children with uniforms, and as we mentioned, undergarments, hygiene kits, and school supplies, and you can see all these, so why don't you hold some of those up? Look at that, the, even tennis shoes over there, so look, all the things that children are going to need on their first day of school and throughout the school year. The Assistance League as well was, is funded and facilitated through low-cost, they have a low-cost dental center, a thrift shop, a holiday toy drive, a food pantry, essential daily living backpack program for victims of human trafficking as well. All of this is only possible through the generosity of the League's volunteers, and today, we recognize the Assistance League of Santa Ana for all that they do, and again, this is a representative body of a much, much larger effort, so thank you all, and somebody come up here and say something about what you all do. Lisa, it looks like everybody's pointing to you, or Susan, come on up.
I think for 81 years, we are the best-kept secret in Santa Ana, but what the council member was talking about was our Operation School Bell, which we really enjoy our wonderful relationship with Stephanie Phillips and the Santa Ana Unified School District, and we... Unified School District, and we are very proud of Operation School Bell. We actually have 227 member volunteers, and we also do a food pantry, and I have a dental center, and we have a thrift shop, which we invite everyone to come to. And we are very, very proud to be the Assistance League of Santa Ana. So thank you for this recognition. We appreciate it.
Thank you. As many of you know, we have many great nonprofits in our city of Santa Ana, and the really great nonprofits have amazing, outstanding, special CEOs. And I'm really honored to today be able to, you know, recognize Virgina Isaías. She is the founder of the Fundación de Sobrevivientes de Tráfico Humano. To translate that, she's the founder of the Foundation for Survivors of Human Trafficking. I'm recognizing her because of her new office location on 17th Street in Santa Ana, but really it's also an opportunity to recognize her for the great community work that she is doing. They are a counseling and resource center that has assisted over 3,800 clients, 70% of which reside in Santa Ana. On an annual basis, like last year, she estimates that overall in one year, there were about 3,000 individuals, mainly ladies, that went to her office seeking some sort of assistance and counseling, either, you know, the real human trafficking or scams where they try to, you know, trick women into, you know, bad situations. They also offer trauma-informed counselors counseling, anger management, parenting classes, life skills, legal advocacy, and education workshops. They also help individuals reintegrate back into society after surviving human trafficking and exploitation or domestic violence and assault and child abuse. They also participate in many local health and wellness fairs, including with sister agencies, museums, libraries, community centers, congregations, colleges, and universities, et cetera. And through the outreach, she's able to reach, you know, many individuals, many women, and help countless in the process. We are pleased that Virgina herself is able to receive this recognition. I know she has a fan club of board members and staff and family members and friends, so that's fantastic. Before I give her the recognition also, she was just very recently profiled in this great book called Mujeres a Prueba de Fuego. Women, you know, under fire, under the test of fire. And she's 1 of 15, not just from this area, so essentially nationwide. And the first profile in the book is a Virgina story because she is also a survivor. And so on behalf of a grateful city, I recognize and we all recognize Virgina Isaías. Felicidades.
Muchas gracias a todos ustedes. Es un honor representar a la Fundación de Sobrevivientes de Tráfico Humano y ser una persona que puede servir. La fundación ayuda a la prevención de este problema tan grande. Y me siento muy honrada de poder servir. La razón que estoy en Santana es porque es un área muy vulnerable, y estoy muy contenta de servir. Gracias porque muchas personas que están aquí me ayudan, me acompañan, y me apoyan en todo lo que necesito. Muchas gracias y es un honor recibir este reconocimiento. Gracias.
Let me do just a brief summary. You know, she does speak English poquito, but I am, you know, I'll give a brief summary. She's thankful for the recognition. She says there are a lot of, you know, vulnerable women in this town and the county that get exploited, and she, you know, is able to, through the benefit and the help of everybody, to assist those individuals, and she hopes to keep doing it, and she is very honored to be here, again, on behalf of a grateful city. Gracias por todo.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to, if you bear with me, we're going to take a few things out of order in the agenda. We're going to open up the hearing for item 75A first, and this is the time and place to hold a public hearing on the ordinance amendment to number 2019-01 to amend certain sections of charters 1821 and 40 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code allowing vertical and horizontal integration of cannabis business. And we have some speakers. Is that correct? So I'm going to go ahead and take these speakers first. Can I have Brandon Cisco come forward? Go ahead, sir. Go and raise a microphone. Welcome.
Hi, good evening.
Raise it up higher. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. As of, I wanted to speak on the marijuana ordinance amendment this evening in support of it. As of June, Santa Ana expected to take in 7.8 million in cannabis taxes and fees for the fiscal year of 2018, 2019. With all that money earmarked for the city's general fund, that's amazing. Taxes generated by cannabis businesses in Santa Ana will help fund police and youth programs in the coming year. That's amazing. These amendments will make Santa Ana a more viable city for current and future cannabis operators in multiple ways. With California voters passing and legalizing cannabis in 2016, it's nice that Santa Ana has stepped up to assist in making it happen in this area. And with it being one of the few cities in Orange County, it's a big, it's a big step in the right direction for this county. And I, with cannabis being legalized, the high taxes in the few cities and the difficulty for the operators, mainly the taxes and the few cities allowing it, is making it difficult for the consumers to fully transition to the licensed market. There's a significant number of people still going to the black market, and we want to make that as easy as possible for cannabis operators to be legal and for people to go to the legal shops. I think this amendment would help that in multiple ways. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I come here on behalf of Congressman Lou Correa. I congratulate the city of Santa Ana for being the first and true green city of Orange County. As Santa Ana looks to create good-paying local jobs, I recommend that you continue to develop and implement policies that encourage development of the cannabis industry at all levels, from cultivation to responsible medication. I fully support the concept of local hire, yet such a policy should not result in the displacement of existing workers. I suggest minimum local hire requirements to be phased in over time, possibly prospectively. In addition, ownership of local businesses is the cornerstone of the American dream. Ownership is one's own business, is the symbol of the free enterprise system that has made this nation great. Changing the rules on businesses, investors, or changing ownership requirements on those that took a risk on Santa Ana in the early days may be an overreach by local government. Such a policy may also disincentivize future investments in the industry in Santa Ana. Instead, consider issuing additional business licenses to local aspiring entrepreneurs who may want to join together as a collective to operate a community-owned business. Again, I congratulate you on assuring that Santa Ana continues to generate green jobs, and I commend you on your effort to encourage local hire and local entrepreneurship. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudio. And we have the congressman's letter right here. Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Ariah. Last, there we go. You have to help me out with the last thing here, sir. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I also wanted to talk on the effort to have 50% of employees from Santa Ana. I am a manager at OC3 Dispensary here in Santa Ana, and I've been working there for about three years now. And with that, we've, I've seen at least 200 applicants over the few years, and a majority of them are unfortunately not from Santa Ana. It's difficult to get that 50% mark, I would say. We are, we make many efforts to hire applicants, qualified applicants from Santa Ana. We offer incentives for people who are not currently living in Santa Ana to move to Santa Ana. So we do everything we can to kind of help the Santa Ana economy here, but it's kind of difficult to weigh that balance. Right now, out of 25 people, I'd say about 5% of them are from Santa Ana, and that 50% could kind of disrupt just the flow of things with the amount of people we see every day. And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next speaker is Will Emrick. Followed by Arturo Sanchez, next.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for, thanks for giving me the time to speak. My name is Will Emrick. I'm a, I'm representing Malibu Gold. Will be the first, we should be the first licensed cultivation and distribution facility in Santa Ana, which we're very excited about. And let me say that our experience with Santa Ana so far has been great. It's been a long process, nearly a year in the making, or actually a little over a year. And everyone has been great, from the, you know, Ali at the planning office, to Evette, Kathy from code enforcement, everyone's been fantastic. And so far, that's, that's been great for us, so we feel like we've made the right decision to invest quite a bit of money into moving our operation in Santa Ana. After looking at a lot of other cities in the state, so far, we feel like our decision is the right one. And I also want to speak specifically about the quota for the operating agreements of the 50%. I feel like this is going to be difficult for us. We're, we're doing everything we can to focus on hiring as many Santa, as many people from Santa Ana as possible. We've, we're not even operating yet. We've already sourced an agency based in Santa Ana to focus on finding people from Santa Ana, to make sure that we're, you know, investing in the community and getting as many workers as possible. But it's, I think it puts us in a difficult position if we're required to do that because there's no guarantee that we're going to find, you know, the right talent that we need. In our business, it's very specific. We need, we need a certain, a certain talented person to be able to execute certain tasks, and, you know, you don't always find it in one particular place. So if it constricts our universe of our most valuable resource for a business, which is talent, that's, I feel like that's a bad thing for, for businesses, and it's a bad thing for, for Santa Ana. Because you guys want healthy businesses, so there's more tax revenue and more investment from other investors and businesses coming in to, to the area. So what I would recommend is focusing on, if there was a mandate, for example, where we had to interview a certain amount of, of, you know, residents of Santa Ana, I think that could fit the bill because, you know, we're happy to do that. What business doesn't want local talent? They're going to be more productive, you know, with less of a commute, and it's ultimately good for the business, whether you're in cannabis or the restaurant business or any, any type of business. So thank you very much for your time. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Arturo Sanchez, followed by Villan Furugia.
Good evening, councilmembers. Madam city manager. My name's Arturo Sanchez. I'm here representing Bloom in Santa Ana. I'd like to first thank you for your thoughtful and careful delivery of cannabis to the city of Santa Ana over several years. I know it's been a long process, and you have a lot of people who've been committed to the industry and who have given a lot of support to the city. And in general, we are supportive of many of the things that are contained in the ordinances that you're considering and the changes that you're considering today. However, I do want to talk about a couple of things. I'll start with the simplest, which is the badges for employees. We do think that there are opportunities to ease the restrictions, to create easier pathways for people to be employed, and one of those barriers right now is the bureaucratic process that exists for badges. We like some of the things that have been changed, but we think there's an opportunity to go a little further. The second thing we really would like to talk about is consumption. At some point, cities will begin to pick up this issue. It is the next evolution of where this industry will go, and we do think that Santa Ana is primed and in a very unique position to lead in the Orange County area with regards to consumption. But I really want to spend the bulk of my time talking about, for lack of a better word, the equity issue, the employment issue, the 50% issue, and how we can find pathways for our communities to participate in a growing industry and to be a part of where the industry is going. And while we support the, the effort that has been made in this particular iteration, we think and we would recommend that the council take a step back and work with us. We are a member of the Santa Ana Cannabis Association, and as a member, we think there's an opportunity to work with SACAA to develop a careful, well-thought-out, well-meaning process whereby we can work on developing what I always like to call generational wealth, right? There are opportunities to create pathways to long-term sustainable employment with living wages, good benefits, and a great environment to work in. And this is one of those few industries in which you can grow your tax base and work closely with it to develop it in such a way that you will guarantee jobs for your, for your residents in your community. And the best way to do that is to work with the stakeholders who have committed themselves to Santa Ana, who have spent a lot of time in Santa Ana and have a willingness to work with you. And so if the council were to consider taking a step back on that item and coming back and working with us, I think you will find that many of the SACAA members would be more than interested in working with you on developing a careful and well-thought-out process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last, Furugia, and next speaker, followed by Erica Gardea.
Hi there. My name's Jillian Furuga. I actually work and live here in Santa Ana. Love the city. So I'm VP of Operations at the dispensary from the earth. We're also part of the Santa Ana Cannabis Association, and I wanted to first thank you guys for bringing us up tonight and always supporting our industry in any way you can. It's been, we've had a few challenges throughout the years, but with all your help, we've been able to kind of address those challenges and move forward. But with our dispensary, one of the biggest issues we've been facing lately is the live scan badge situation. So over the summer, it's our super-busy time. We have, we're significantly understaffed because now that the live scans have gone through the planning department, it takes up to a month for us to get the results back. So because of that, we don't have the staff to be able to support the amount of customers coming in. And that being said, the wait time has tripled since this time last year. So that concerns us because we're thinking that our customers are now going to shop in other cities, probably illegal dispensaries, which we're trying to avoid at all costs. It's also really hard to hire people because if someone's waiting a month to get those results back, typically they find other employment. So it's making it really difficult for us. And then lastly, we're kind of at the mercy of employees who might not be a good fit for us. Like, we had someone we caught stealing that we couldn't really afford to get rid of because our wait times were so bad. So if there's anything we can do to help, we're willing to do that. But it's definitely affecting us and all the other legal operators within the city. That's it.
Thank you very much. Erica Gardea, followed by Malahat. Erica Gardea, followed by Malahat.
Hello. My name is Erica Gardea. I'm a member of the Santa Ana Cannabis Association. I did want to address the badges as well. We have had, we've actually reached out a lot to, like, the planning department, trying to help in any way we can to try to move forward and help get the badges sooner than we have. We've, you know, we haven't been able to hire people because we haven't been, had issues with not being able to get new employees in, you know, so we just really would like, you know, your help in trying to, you know, fix these issues that we're having. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Malahat, last speaker. And Madam Clerk, we don't have any other cards? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Malahat Rafi. I represent the Santa Ana Cannabis Association. I want to thank staff for their tireless effort to bring this forward, and the council members that are looking at this and helping us move forward on an issue that's been a little dormant for, for this industry. It's a cleanup bill, we appreciate it. The language is going to allow us to compete with other cities in the state when it comes to medicinal sales. It's going to help us vertically integrate, which is huge for the city, because we do have a lot of operators in the city that want to do so. Part of the issues that have come up that are of concern to us is, of course, this local hire requirement and mandate. When these ordinances were written, the association was at the table with council members and with, with staff, making sure local hire was on the table, because it's really important for us as an association to make sure we're bringing in revenue, not just to the city, but also into the pockets of people in the city. We want to make sure, though, that what we set forth is manageable and attainable. And if you're going to hinder the industry that brings so much revenue to the city, it's going to be something that will ultimately harm the city's pocketbook. And we want to make sure that we're working together for that not to happen. Also, the requirement for businesses to allow their employees to invest within their company, I think we, we want to look at that and figure out a way to bring social equity to Santa Ana that, again, is viable. A lot of these companies are not publicly traded companies. These are mom-and-pop shops that have started, and those are not possibilities for them. But the biggest issue that we have, has been brought up by members of our association, is the badge system. It's taking up to eight weeks to get an employee through the system. We agree that it's important to have background checks for these employees, but we also want to make sure that the, the owners and operators are not having to hold on to bad employees just because they can't get somebody else to the door. We are hiring folks at a living wage. Most of the shops have either signed or working with project labor groups and the labor unions. So we are providing high-paying jobs for, for residents of Santa Ana and beyond, and we just want to make sure that we go through that process faster. We appreciate all the work from staff. I know this is something that is a giant hurdle for all of us, but together we can get through this. We appreciate the support. The industry looks forward to working with the city. Just recently, we worked with the school district and collected 4,000 items for their backpack drive and contributed $4,000 as well. And we want to continue working with all different aspects of the city and the nonprofit sector as well, because we are here to stay, we are here to participate, and we are here to make Santa Ana stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no other members in the public, we're going to close the public hearing, and now move on to the council members. Councilmember Sarmiento, I believe you wanted to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And so I did want to clarify first, because this is the first time I'm going to be participating on this, that Madam City Attorney, you have a copy of a letter from the FPPC allowing me to participate with no conflict that they've identified, correct?
I do, council member. And if I may, for just one second, also just put on the record that Mayor Palito will not be participating in this item this evening. As you know, he has disqualified himself from participating in cannabis items due to some past consultant relationships, and he asked me to convey that to you. And yes, we do have a letter from the FPPC authorizing you to participate in these decisions.
Right. And my conflict was more because I, I consult and give legal counsel to public agencies. I don't have any clients that are on the operations side. So that's one of the reasons. Out of an abundance of caution, I always conflicted myself and recused out of this because I just felt that there was sufficient, you know, council support, but it looks like that's been waning. So one of the reasons I stepped back in is because I knew that these measures that were supported by the industry just weren't getting done. So I want to make sure that we are able to support the industry and make sure it's successful. And so I'm kind of reinjecting myself back into the conversation so I can be supportive, but also help guide it. So one of the things I wanted to do, and one of the things I hear very clearly, is that there's some, some hesitation, some reluctance on some of the changes with respect to the social equity element of the recommended items. So Madam City Attorney, I would request that we pull those items out, as it, as it refers to the local hire, as it refers to the pathways to management and, and work, and see if we could revisit those when it comes to second reading. I spoke with some of the industry representatives that spoke here today, and I think we can probably finesse some of the language, come to some understanding, because from what, what I understand and what I heard from all the speakers, you want to do the right thing. You don't want to come into the city and create a consumer community out of our residents. You want to make sure that those residents are here that allowed you to enter and bring your industry here and be successful. You want to create pathways to success for them. You want to give them good-paying jobs, good benefits, but not only that, but opportunities to succeed and prosper along with you. That's what I'm hearing. And so I think that's all that is being put forward here tonight. So I think if we all sit down, and I'd like to have all of you at the table, you know, and I'll make myself available to sit down and come up with a creative way to kind of engineer this, and I think we can do this. This isn't rocket science. Other communities unfortunately did this at the front end, this one didn't. So we are having to do this sort of from the back end, but I think we can still accomplish a lot of goals. And some of the things that you were talking about, about outside consumption, I think this community, this community could do it. I think it's something that, if it's done intelligently, it can be done well. So that's another second step, I think, that we could take together, is seeing how we can incorporate that and see that as next steps. But if, you know, all it takes is open minds, but sometimes when communications are flawed, boy, it just doesn't work. So, you know, I think everybody who has open minds and, you know, all, all of you who've invested, I think, understand that there's a lot to be gained here. So that would be my recommendation, is to go ahead and move the item with everything, with the exception of the social equity elements of that. One other thing, Madam City Attorney, is I know that there's a recommended action on reducing the taxes for testing labs from 5% to 2%. What would the, what would the disparity or delta be if we went down to 1%?
Council member, we do have our planning director here. We also, Mayor Protem, we have a short presentation, if you would like to see a presentation on all the changes, and I will defer to him to see if he could do a quick calculation on what the, the variance would be of dropping it to a 1%.
So the changes would include the removal of the social equity language?
Correct. So it's a, it's a separate recommended action and a standalone resolution, so I believe the motion is to just pull number five of the recommended actions and consider one through four.
And then what I would do is, because you need to have a second reading on the ordinance anyway, I would return, next time this appears on your agenda, agenda, as a second reading, so that you can actually, you and the public can see that those two items were cleaned up, both the operating agreement and the resolution, and any changes that you might want can be incorporated at that time.
So we have a first and a second on that. Does anyone want to see the presentation? No, I think we're okay without the presentation.
You guys have seen it before.
Seen it before a few times, so. Okay, very good. Is there any other council member, Solorio?
Well, just if, if that question could be answered on the, on the disparity between the 1% and 2%, in other words, we may get to 2%, but maybe that's an incremental increase.
So currently, we only have two testing laboratory businesses in the city, and the revenue from them is, from those type of businesses are negligible, so if we go from 2% to 1%, we estimate that's probably about $15,000 difference. But that's just an estimate. Again, testing laboratories are not your revenue generator, but they're there more for ensuring safety, quality of the product, and that there's a third-party review of the products that's sold in the marketplace.
No, and I appreciated staff in its report, in the staff report, including other cities and what their rates are. Some of their rates are at four, five, and six, but they're outside of Orange County. So we have a neighboring city in Irvine that has zero.
Correct.
So to the extent that we're competing with them, you know, again, I get that we want to make sure that we have at least some assessment, but I want it to be more commensurate with what are sort of, you know, what we are, how we are in the county. So, you know, that would be just something I'd like to open up for my colleagues and for some discussion.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Solorio?
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you. I think we have in Santa Ana an industry that stepped up, worked collaboratively with the city. Because of that, we're really actually a model city that the state of California looks to for having started things on time, having good policies in place. The revenue, almost every year doubles. As the speaker said, you know, we, we, we received approximately or close to $8 million this, this last fiscal year. This council also said of that type of revenue that a third go for youth programs, a third for public safety programs, you know, and law enforcement, and then, you know, the third just general fund. So that's been excellent, and a lot of jobs have been created, a lot of value has been added to our community. I also want to thank Councilmember Sarmiento. I know, you know, he had not been participating in the past, and he saw that there was a need, that this is important work that we're trying to do, and so, you know, I'm grateful, Councilmember Sarmiento, for, for that help. When we, when we started this, we did put on the front end some very good policy that has local hire, that has, you know, the best in SoCal with Long Beach, you know, a labor peace agreement provision. There is a benefit preference for Santa Ana residents and Santa Ana businesses, so that is also good. Also, direction to try to be as green as possible, so I think a lot of good work was done, but that doesn't mean that we can't do more. I think it's important in this industry, because it's new, to allow innovation, and so with respect to doing more in the areas of community reinvestment or social equity, a common thing is just to say for them to develop a plan that may include things like that, and then it's up to the company on how they want to achieve it. And I think, you know, maybe that, that might be an approach as well. With local hire goals, you know, at the Rancho College Board, we did a workforce agreement. We took much of that to Santa Ana. You want to do a goal rather than a requirement, you know, that that would be one approach, and then you try to meet that, and then if folks exceed that, even better, but that might be an, an approach. Equally important is reporting. You know, it's one thing to require all these things or to ask for all these things, but if we're not reporting back to folks within the industry, policymakers and others, you're not really, you know, managing, you know, to excellence as we could. So I know we've now have had some of these local hire and other provisions for a while. It would be nice to have a report back on, on what's been done. Similarly, on the public worksite, I know we have a citywide workforce agreement, and it would be good to receive a report on, on that as well. Finally, at our last edebit committee, or, you know, budget committee for short, Councilmember Peñalosa and I did agendize and discuss the possibility of lounges, because other cities have started to implement that, and there are some best practices, including that at Palm Springs. So I think there are some of us that are very interested in seeing that piece come forward sooner than later. Really, this, this set of items includes about, you know, 100 cleanup things, so there's a lot of good stuff in here. There's been a focus just on just a few, but I think we're making very good progress, and, you know, I'm hopeful that on this, you know, third or fourth try, we'll be able to pass this. Thank you.
Councilmember Iglesias? Iglesias, very good.
Okay. Well, thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of where I feel, you know, this is just my opinion, where we stand as a city. I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're trying to see how we're going to generate revenue here for the city, and my opinion is that, yeah, we may, we may be generating, according, you know, to what Councilmember Solorio said, $8 million in revenue, but yet we are spending a lot more to, to undo the, the harm of having cannabis in our city. I know you may not agree with me, but cannabis is a gateway drug, and it's something that's affecting our community. And, and I know that it's, you know, for a lot of, for a lot of you can say, you know, it's easy money, let's bring it into the city. Santa Ana, for the most part, has been a city that we pretty much say yes to anything. And, and I know right now what we need to do is start looking at ways on how we're going to health, in a healthy way, bring revenue to our city. I, you know, the one thing is, you know, we're trying to see, we talk about that we don't have enough funds, yet we're trying to bring down the percentage of what the, the, you know, for laboratories testing from 5% to 2%, and now considering 1%, I just think it's, it's not correct. If we're going to do something, I think, you know, this is how it was voted on, this is something how it was set, let's just keep it at least with, you know, whatever you, it was initially intended for. So my vote, you guys know where I stand, I, I'm a no, but, but just the one thing that I am going to agree with, one of what the, the people were talking about, was that we shouldn't be imposing on businesses how to run their business. I, I believe, you know, they, you know, they know best what's best for their business, even though it's something that I don't agree with, but it's best for them to do what, you know, how to run their business. But, but I know on that note, you know, just the way I feel, you know, being on the school board, the thing that really grabbed me was when we were doing expense, suspensions and expulsions, is because our youth and our students had access to, to marijuana. And so, you know, it's easier for, for them to have access to it. So, you know, I just, I just hope that the businesses here are more responsible in seeing who their customers are and just being more responsible to our community, because our, I believe our community deserves it, and, you know, and for those of you who are, you know, are having great oversight, I truly appreciate it. But like I said, you know, my convictions and my thought is, I'm a no on this, but I just want to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Peñalosa?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to say that, with that said, you know, one of my best friends is a Santa Ana school police officer, and they do oftentimes find students that have marijuana on them or, or vape pens, which is illegal under state law because they're under the age of 18. And one of the questions that they're asked is, where did you get it? And they point to all the illegal dispensary shops that our code enforcement and law enforcement officers are actively trying to shut down. I've, just on, on January 1st, and part of the cleanup language with this item is to facilitate the, the legal cannabis shops that are permitted to, to work more effectively and open up more effectively, and go after these illegal shops that are popping up around the state and our code enforcement has been shutting down. Just on January 1st, we went on a press tour. We were invited by the, by the association to do a press tour for the, for the one-year anniversary of legal cannabis in our city. And it was like getting through TSA just to walk in through the door. You know, they took my ID, they, they made me fill out a form, and it was, it was, you know, they wanted to verify that I was of age, and, yeah, here I am, a sitting council member, you know, pushing mid-30s, and, and I wasn't easy to get in. So the, the kids at school that are getting found with the illegal cannabis, they're getting at the illegal shops, and they will find it regardless, whether the shops are legal or not. And, and this item, it's something that's here to stay, it's something that's only going to progress more in the country, across the country, and I think that we, you know, it's basically just supporting the business aspect of it. And I'm, you know, supportive of it and want to, you know, it's only in the early beginning stages, and I want to do whatever I can to help any business of any kind operate efficiently in our city. And that's all, the only comments I have. Mr. Mayor Protem?
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments, so I can make my comment? One more? Councilmember Solorio?
Just a couple of quick things to correct the record. Crime is not up because of these dispensaries. And if anybody thinks they have that type of data, I'd like to see it, because, you know, it, it, it's not there. And in fact, for the legal dispensaries, which there are about 20, I probably have gotten in the past three years that I've been back on the council, zero complaints about crime there or nearby. We do hear, you know, about some of the legal ones or street-level stuff, but not from these dispensaries. There's, if anything, you know, this is a little bit more, more professional, there's education with it, et cetera, and there are also numerous, you know, drugs on the streets, not just this one, so we can't blame, you know, anything on, on this legal industry. And then with respect to this council supporting these policies, yeah, policy-wise, we may support them, but it's also because of the will of the voters. The voters in this town have now consistently, on local measures, statewide measures, support this industry. And I think, and, and, and I, and I think we want to regulate it. We want to regulate it, keep it safe, because if not controlled, it could be an issue, or like other cities, they're overwhelmingly dominated by illegal dispensaries that do sell to kids, that do- sell to kids, that do have bad business practices, that do cheat workers, et cetera. So we're following the will of the voters and regulating this correctly and putting some of those resources to good use. Thank you.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Thank you. And I just wanted to, I was about to call for the question, but just one stat that probably none of my colleagues have with respect to historical knowledge is we had a moratorium in town for eight years when I started on the city council. During that moratorium, none of this was allowed, and I see our code enforcement director nodding his head. We had at that point about 100, more than 120 illegal operators. That was a lot in a moratorium. And so we tried that. And what's the definition of insanity? Is just doing the same thing and getting the same result. Now, from what I understand, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, Madam City Manager, we have close to 20 or less than 20 unpermitted operators.
Permitted. Maybe two.
All right, look, even better. So down from 120-something to two. Those are the folks that I think all of us were trying to undermine, right, and prevent. So I think that goal has been achieved. You know, look, again, this is something that, we tried that. We tried to say no, and we tried to say, look, it doesn't make sense. And all that was happening is more and more unpermitted operators were being introduced. And so I think this is a much better path. It certainly created a way for responsible operators to come in, operators that can be regulated, for there to be, you know, quality. And so now at this point, I think it's a matter of just moving forward, so I'll just call for the question. Based on that.
All right, thank you, councilmembers. My opinion, well, like I said in the committee, Public Safety Committee, where this item was there for a very long time, I've always been a no on it. I'm not a fan of cannabis or the industry or anything like that, but the voters voted. Everyone knows I worked for the Sheriff's Department 29 years, I taught drug ed for 16 years, I dealt with people that have substance abuse problems for almost three decades now. Many people, my personal experience, many people I interact with, they didn't start because I would ask them, you know, how did you get started in this problem? And they would say, you know, I started with marijuana. They wouldn't say I started with alcohol. It's weird. That's just personal experience. But anyway, I am a man of the law. You know, the voters voted. I'd rather have local control than be held at the state, and that's why I've been supportive of the ordinance here. Now, today we have this item before us, it's a lot of cleanup language. I also believe, like Councilmember Iglesias, I also believe that we should be telling businesses how to run, you know, their own shops. So I'm not a fan of the social equity language on this, so I'm glad we're not having that today. But, you know, we do have to be responsible. If we're going to have this here, we really, really have to have control. The other day we had, I was, you know, I'm on the fire board, you saw me give the presentation to explorers earlier, you know, I was talking to the fire chief, and we had six kids in the city who, you know, OD'd on those edibles. They were eating them, they got sick, they ended up in the hospital, it was terrible. Got to be careful with these things. That's why when we were in the committee, I think Councilmember Solorio and I were talking about, any money that we make off of this, some of it has to go towards our youth, educating them about drugs and doing things that deter them from keeping this away from them. Because, you know, everyone has their own reservations about something, I have mine regarding this. But, okay, so I will call for the question.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, sorry to interrupt. Can I just get a clarification? So the motion is to approve recommendations 1 through 4 and make the change of the 5 to 1%?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Okay, I'll call for the question. If you're in favor, go ahead and push the green button. Green for cannabis and the red for, red for no. Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. You can have the mayor come back and join us, please.
So should, did we already report out of closed session? So let's report out of closed session, please.
We did not. Mayor and councilmembers, members of the public, we had one reportable action item this evening. It's number one on your closed session agenda. The city council approved a settlement for the purchase of property for an additional amount of $157,000.
Okay. Next, we're going to go to the consent calendar then. Do I have any items that members want to pull? Councilmember Iglesias?
I do, but, um-
Put the clock on, please.
No, 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 but I will, um, councilmember-
I'm kidding, she just gets-
No, Councilmember Peñalosa says he has someone here. Can we do the presentations first before we-
The-
Councilmember Peñalosa. Oats of office, I mean.
I agree.
All right, let's continue with consent calendar and then we'll come back. No, I'm kidding, go ahead. Who is here to-
I don't know what items they are, but I'd like to make a motion to approve or pull the item. Where is it?
Why on would that be, Madam Clerk?
The appointments to the boards.
13-something, or what? 13C.
Oh, there it is.
I'd like to-
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
No, I'm, it's, I'd like to make a motion to approve 13A and 13B.
Okay.
Those are appointments to the youth commission and-
Okay, so we have motion and a second by our Mayor Protem. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now you can swarm in.
If you could please raise your right hand and just repeat after me, aye. Please state your name.
Miguel Calderon.
Andrea Anella Ordones.
To solemnly swear-
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear. That I will support-
That I will support.
And defend-
And defend.
The Constitution-
The Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
State of California.
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic.
That I will-
That I will.
Bear true faith-
Bear true faith.
And allegiance-
And allegiance.
To the Constitution-
To the Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will-
That I will.
Well and faithfully-
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
But they're going to shake hands, but they're ready to go to meetings. Thank you, you two, and congratulations.
And thank you for your help on Summer Night Lights at Madison. That's been amazing. Thank you.
So now let's go to the consent counter, if we may. Are there any items that councilmembers would like to pull? Councilmember Iglesias?
Okay, I want to pull 11A, 25A, 25G, 25H, and 25K.
Any other items by councilmembers? Councilmember Peñalosa?
19C.
19C pulled. Any other items?
20C, Mr. Mayor.
20C. Councilmember Sarmiento? Any other items? Councilmember Solorio, would you like to move the balance?
Move the balance.
Is there a second for the balance?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So now we are going to go, I think, who had the first item? Was it-
11.
I think it's 19C.
19C, I believe.
No, it's 11A.
Oh, 11A. Go ahead.
So the reason I just wanted to pull this is because the first time for the first reading, I know I voted no on it, and I just wanted to vote yes on the rest of it. So that was the only reason why I pulled it.
All right, is that clear? Madam City Manager, this is not that item on First Street that I had questions about.
No, 11A is the second reading of the ordinance. It had to relate to the 7-Eleven, so she wants to register a no, so you could move-
All right, so you're changing your vote from the previous council meeting, or what?
No, I pulled it because I wanted to, you know, I was voting yes on the rest of the item, so I wanted to pull it so I can vote separately.
All right, so let's take a motion on this item then. I'll move approval. I'll second.
I'm confused. Are we voting on this single item?
Just this single item, that's what she wants.
Yes.
So we're all yes, but you're a no. Can the clerk record that, please? Thank you. Next item, would that be 20, 19C maybe? Let's go for 19C.
Madam City Manager, the reason why I wanted to pull this item is I don't have many issues with it, but I just wanted clarification. There's a couple line items in there. Again, I read every single thing in these staff reports. There's some, it's small amounts, they're under five grand, but it's Knott's Berry Farm tickets and OC Fair tickets. I just wanted, for clarification, who are those tickets for? Is it a fundraiser we're doing, donations?
I certainly will stand corrected by our Parks and Rec Director, but my, I assume what it is, it's for the youth excursions out of the Parks and Rec Department. Lisa, am I correct on that? That's correct.
Fair enough. I should have asked in our meeting, but I just saw it this morning and was curious about it. Thank you.
Could I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move the item.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, next item, 20C, I believe. Was that-
That was my answer, Mayor. Thank you. And I just wanted to move the item and thank our representative from the Met, Councilman Solorio, and our staff from Water. This has been a collaborative effort. And I just wanted to say this, quagga mussels, is that what they're called? Quagga mussels. So they're, they're an invasive presence, I guess, species found in Lake Mead, right? So since we needed the Met to be the agency that was eligible for the grant money, this is all coming from them, and we're looking at $122,000 for program study money. Is that correct? So great, thank you. You don't need to come up here, I just wanted to say thank you for that, and I'm glad for the collaborative effort that we have with the Met, with the Water, with the Orange County Water District, and with the city agency. I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion, a second. Those in favor, you want to, why do I never do the buttons at OCTA or at AQMD? Only where here, we do the buttons.
We want to capture it correctly. Accuracy is important, so that we're making sure that we're-
If it's unanimous, how accurate can it be? All right, let's just vote.
You never know.
I just think it's a lot slower. Okay, next item, 25A.
Okay, 25A is, it says, approved community benefit agreement with Not, you know, with Noti's House, San Ana Extreme, and Wise Place for fiscal year 2019, 2020, for a total amount of $110,000. And I know it's coming from the Community Development Agency. My question to the city manager is, where is this money coming from?
This would be general fund dollars. These were three nonprofits that applied for CDBG funding and didn't receive an allocation. So as part of the budget process, it was requested to allocate $110,000 to these three nonprofits, but it is general fund dollars.
Okay, so they, we had a process with CDBG. They weren't selected because of the process that they didn't score high enough?
It was just the limited amount of CDBG money that we had and the other requests, they were prioritized, and we ran out of money before we got to them of CDBG dollars.
Okay, so what I want to say is, although I, you know, I have good working relationships with Noti's House and, you know, Wise Place, I, my thought is, when you go in for a proposal for an RFP, you know, you have to have a good RFP in order for you to get selected. I mean, there is a process, right? You have evaluators, you have individuals who are reviewing the RFP. And we only have so much money to go around, so you would hope that, you know, you draft a great proposal so you can get funding. And what really concerns me is that it's coming from general funded money. And I don't think we should be giving money to nonprofit, you know, to anyone from the general fund money that should be going for critical services for our community. So, you know, I had a dilemma, you know, I really like what they're doing, but when you're running nonprofit, it's like you want, got to make sure that you're able to pay your bills in order to provide your programs and not just rely on a certain entity for you to be able to operate. So my vote on this is going to be a no, just the fact that it's, you know, it's coming from the general fund of money, and I don't think we should be giving that money away.
Thank you. I beg to differ with that. I think these are solid organizations, and it's part of the process to come to councilmembers, and we deliberate, and we can agree or disagree. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this item.
I'll second.
Okay, any comments? Councilwoman Solorio?
Briefly, this was part of the budget process, as City Manager Rich said, so I appreciate the follow-up, and we do spend general fund, we allocate it for services, and oftentimes some of the critical services are through nonprofits. So Wise Place is a women's shelter. They applied, they had a very solid application. And then Noti's House and Neutral Ground do provide excellent services directly to the community. They, for example, recently with Summer Night Lights, ran an amazing program with hundreds and hundreds of children, providing services in a very deserving area and in a more cost-effective way than the city could provide. So, you know, I applaud these organizations for stepping up to the plate to help our community, and I'm pleased that we're spending general fund resources for youth programs and for women's shelters.
Thank you. Any other comments? With that, I believe we have motion, a second. Those in favor, please press green. All right, motion passes. Next item, I believe it was Councilmember Iglesias again.
This is to approve an agreement with Fiesta de Carnaval for carnival services rights for the Fiesta de Patrias event. So my question for staff is going to be, how did we decide that Fiesta de Carnaval was going to be the provider of, I guess, overseeing the event?
Okay. Director Rudloff, would you like to answer the question? Thank you.
Lisa Rudloff, Executive Director, Parks Recreation Community Service, have Juan Lara here, a recreation supervisor, and he will explain.
Okay. Mayor, councilmembers, just to clarify, the reason why we proceeded with Fiesta de Carnaval is because they are a current contractor for our park carnivals that take place throughout our park system throughout the year. So they're a proven entity, and we were comfortable in working with them for this particular activity.
But how did you select them? I mean, were there other individuals or other organizations or businesses that wanted to have this opportunity to have this business with the city?
There is a very limited amount of companies, you know, we always go through the RFP process for carnivals at our parks, and given the time constraints that we had, we did not have an opportunity to go through an RFP process specifically for this activity. So again, given that we have a proven record, and with this company, we were felt comfortable in just extending them the opportunity. We do look forward to opening the RFP for all carnival services for 2020, which will also include Fiesta de Patrias.
Yeah, because this is like the biggest event that we have in the city, so I don't think it's right that we're just selecting one person, I mean, one business, whether to giving it an opportunity for everyone to, to apply. So another question is, when you- So another question is, when you do these contracts, are you asking these individuals for their employees to go through background checks?
That is part of the agreement, and again, just to clarify, normally, when we do RFPs for carnivals, we usually only get two responses, and Fiesta de Carnaval always tends to be the one that ends up with the agreement, but we'll make sure that we share that, those results for the next RFP process. But part of the agreement does require that the contractor does do their due diligence in making sure that their employees are background checked.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Given that, it was a pleasure of the council. Go ahead, question, Councilor Sarmiento?
Yeah, this is a little off-topic, but since we're talking about fiestas, so they've moved, right, as of last year, they're now on Flower between Civic Center and Fourth Street, somewhere where before they were in the downtown, so, you know, I guess, are we sort of in still the pilot programming stage, or is this their permanent home? They were in the downtown for years, and so I know that there are a lot of other events that are in the downtown, so why wouldn't they be on Flower Street as well?
Part of the reason that we tried this new location and that being Flower between Santa Ana Boulevard and Civic Center was because of the development of the Light Rail project. So as you know, the Light Rail project will be running through downtown, and that pretty much also would occupy the entire footprint, or the majority of the footprint of our festival. So, given that we will not be able to work around the Light Rail once it's fully operational, we do feel that Flower between Santa Ana Boulevard and Civic Center is the best location for this event now.
So any other events that would be in the alignment, or along the alignment where the streetcar is going to be, probably also would be better served to be in that area as well?
Correct, and most of those projects or events are privately produced, and that would be the recommendation that we would make once we receive their request.
Okay, just looking for consistency, so that's good. Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Thanks for those questions, another question, Councilor Penyalosa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and with the promotional company, I know that, from what I recall, they were the same ones that were used last year, correct, Lisa? Or, yes?
Just to clarify, you're speaking to the carnival company?
Yeah.
No, it is not the same company, that company actually has gone out of business.
Ah, okay, and that was the, kind of the concern that I had, because last year, I know that that company was making an effort to go around the numerous different, you know, neighborhood, some of the neighborhood associations, Santa Ana Business Council, Downtown Inc., kind of get, you know, the lay of the land, and see what the overall community wanted to see, and I was at one of those meetings, and I personally wasn't happy with their marketing, because all their marketing was in English, you know, promoting Fiesta de Patrias in Santa Ana, and you're going to do everything in English, which was, that's why I wasn't sure if it was the same one or not. But just moving forward, I would like to see this put out to different contractors, but it is important to maintain consistency, not just in the location, but with the promotional company, because when it comes to events and putting events together, you're always going to, you know, have hiccups regardless of what you're trying to do, so you're only going to get better over time and learn, but, so, it's kind of, I don't know, I'm, when that time comes for next year, just, Madam City Manager, if you could make sure that staff really works with us, and to see what kind of outreach is done for other carnival companies out there.
Okay. Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
So given that, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have motion to second, those in favor, please press green. Okay, next item, I believe it was Councilor Iglesias as well.
For this one, it's 25H, is approved agreement with Schweizer Corporation for Landscape Maintenance Services, for a three-year period in an amount not to exceed $125,000 annually, for a total amount of $625,000, and it's coming from the non-general fund. I just want to know where staff gets $625,000. If you divide it by three, you get $125,000. The math just doesn't add up, because if it's 125 times three, it's 375, so where's that extra 200 and, would be, 250?
Is there a contingency, what's going on?
No, so it's for a three-year period, but it has a provision for a two-year renewal option, so we're pricing the entire five years, which equates to the 625.
Right. Okay. So then with $125,000, they are going to provide services, landscaping services, to maintain the water facility and the Santa Ana Regional Transportation Center?
That's correct, there's 19 water enterprise facilities, such as well sites and pump stations that are included in the water sites, and then the train station, as you mentioned.
Was this agreement, did it go out to bid?
Yes, it was competitively bid, RFPs were issued, and Sawyer was the one that received the highest score to land the contract that's for your consideration.
And it's $125,000, just, what landscape, just cutting the lawn, I mean, what exactly?
I can ask our Deputy Director of Public Works, Nabeel, if he can talk about the scope of services in the agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor of the council, my name is Nabeel Sabah, Deputy Director of Public Works. We do have 21 groundwater wells, and each well has its own site, where we need landscape company to come in and clean and maintain the landscape around the wells. We also have seven pump stations. One example of the pump stations that we have is the one right on Memory Lane and Bristol, huge pump station that we have a contractor come in, maintain the frontage, or the front of the pump station, and onsite. In addition to the pump stations, we have 10 reservoir sites that we need maintenance on, just to keep them clean and maintained landscape, including the cleaning of the facilities themselves.
But $125,000.
On the outside.
For me, I just think it's $125,000.
All right, for those that want to move forward, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move the item, just with the quick comment.
Motion is set, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that all the questions that have been asked are in the first three pages of the staff report, and so if we just, all of us just make sure that we went over these staff reports ahead of time to avoid these questions being asked. But with that said, I'll move the item.
Okay, we have motion to second, those in favor, please press green. Okay, we have one other item prior to 25K, and that is 20D, was requested recently by Councilor Sarmiento, so technically, we've already voted on the balance of the calendar, but he wanted to bring that up specifically. So should we take it out of the vote we just took and reconsider it? What would be appropriate?
Did we vote on the balance of the?
Yeah, we voted on the balance.
The consent?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
You know, maybe I'm consistent with my vote, in other words, I supported the balance, which included 20D, I just had some questions for the staff.
Why don't we just answer your questions on 20D, and if it needs to be reconsidered, we will, but if not, let's just have that discussion right now. Please go ahead.
So my only question was, is that this looks like it's an appropriation for $574,000 for additional legal help that would be outside of what we would, what we could do in-house. What's the period of time for that?
Also important to point out, it's a complete pass-through, so the amounts are collected by developers, and then passed through to the attorneys that are contracted for the work.
So, at this point, the, as mentioned by our city manager, it is a pass-through. The cost is when we do have legal issues with development project, it is borne by the developer, we collect the money with an administrative fee, and it's for defending the project. In this particular instance, we have two, one project that is under, has been filed for a petition for legal action recently, and the legal firm has worked on the project, and therefore, we're requesting that the allocation allows us to have the pass-through contract be executed. The applicant has already deposited the funding, we need the mechanism to allow us to actually pay for legal fees to the firm.
Did they answer your question?
I understand that, but the staff report just didn't say the, usually, you know, it's a three-year period, it's an annual, so it was silent on that time, so I just wanted to get...
So, the first one, the $74,000 was for fees that we have already incurred for 2018-19 fiscal year, the upcoming $500,000, I'm sorry, the $500,000 for the upcoming fiscal year 1920, for this current fiscal year.
Look, so I'm fine supporting it, just to the extent that we can make sure that the staff report defines a period of time that we're going to be making this appropriation for, and I know that it's for, you know, BB&amp;K, and BB&amp;K is a very good firm, and we use them almost as a default, but we want to make sure that we also diversify that list of firms that we're going to be having, and I know Madam City Attorney is very supportive of that, she, that was one of her initial proposals when she came here to this council, so, just so we move forward on that, I won't change my vote, I'll just call that to the attorney.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
25K?
Just wanted to pull it so I can vote separately, so I have, this is my same questions that I had in the other one, even though I know Councilmember Penyalosa, it is on the report, but it is my right as an elected official to ask the questions that I want to ask, because the public wants to know.
All right, so with that, I want to entertain a motion. I'll move approval, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, those in favor, please press green. Motion carries five to one. So now our next item, I believe we're going to 55A, is it, Madam Clerk?
55C.
55, oh yes.
55.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, 55D.
55D.
55, that's what I thought, we did A, B, and C. So 55D, I would entertain a motion on 55D.
So move.
Second.
Those in favor, please, a question, all right, put the green light on, go ahead.
Okay, so this one is to adopt a resolution, we're saying the library department, which I am in support of, and I think it's something that we have been asking for as a community and also as council members. But one question, one concern that I have is, prior to the separation of the parks, and you know, having the library being its own department, I know for a fact, and she was doing an amazing job with the youth council, was Cheryl, Cheryl from the library, and my concern is that the youth council has been stripped away from the library, and it's given, it's been given to the Parks and Recreation, which I know we have a lot of youth who use those services, and we help them, and we, you know, provide those services, so I was wondering if it's a possibility for us to have both, have oversight of the youth council both. I know Mr. Lada is doing a good job in being the one that's coordinating that, but if we could have also Cheryl be part of overseeing the youth council, because she's been doing an amazing job, I know the youth love her, especially the ones with Teen Space, and they, she's just been doing an amazing job, so I, you know, she is, I think, the youth supervisor, so I'm hoping that if we could have both of them oversee it, you know, being part of the youth council, because they are deciding on almost $3 million, because this is what, you know, the youth council is trying to see where they're going to go with this. So if we could have her on that, as part of that board or committee, I think it's something good, that would provide an extra voice from the kids who have been used to working with her.
Councilmember, you raise a really good point, because the youth commission does provide valuable input to both Parks and Recs program, as well as library programs. So I don't believe it will be a problem at all to keeping both departments involved with the youth commission. As far as specific staffing, I would need to take a look at the roles and responsibilities before I could make a commitment of a specific staff member.
You'll be able to see that both of them stay as an oversight for the youth commission?
Absolutely, we can keep both departments involved in that particular commission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion, Councilor Solorio?
Yeah, briefly, I know it's too typical when we talk, you know, about a specific individual, but I had for a couple years been hearing great things about Cheryl, but never really had an opportunity to talk to her, and I finally did at a youth-oriented event, talked to her. She's a very talented staff person, she lives in town, she cares about the kids, she cares about the program, she's creative, she's intelligent, definitely a role there or beyond, I think is very, very merited.
You'll move it? Okay, is there a second? Those in favor, please press green. Okay, what's the next item, Madam Clerk?
55E.
55E, this is adopting a resolution, accepting a donation for our K9 equipment and supplies from Joanna Schilleri for the Santa Police Department, I entertain a motion.
So move.
We have motion to second, those in favor, please press green. Our next item is 55F, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion to second, those in favor, please press green. 55G is our next item, is adopting a reimbursement agreement resolution for land use applications and projects. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move the item.
Mayor Protem seconds it.
I'll second it.
Those in favor, please press green. Next item is 60A, is approving a density bonus agreement to allow a 552 O'Porto rental project over on East First Street. This is the item I was asking about earlier, Madam City Manager. Okay, before we do anything, I have a list of speakers, so let's hear from the speakers. Kimberly Adams, followed by Isul Marcus, I believe it might be, from Fullerton. Go ahead, Kimberly.
My name is Kimberly Adams, I'm Regional Organizing Director for California YIMBY in the Orange County area. We're a pro affordable housing nonprofit who supports this project wholeheartedly. It's no secret that California, Orange County, and even Santa Ana is in the midst of a housing crisis, particularly affordable housing. The development proposed by Jamboree Housing and Pacific Companies is a huge step in the right direction, with 552 affordable units that will also include Section 8 vouchers. There are people suffering, multiple families living in single-family homes or apartments, and folks and families suffering from housing instability, not to mention the people who grew up in Santa Ana, have families here, or work here, and have no opportunity to actually live here. Commuting for people who cannot live near where they work, or commutes, are crushing, contributing to our climate crisis, and severely curbing quality of life. The development will help all of these folks and improve the community. Healthy communities require a few elements, including access, environmental responsibility, stable housing, and safety. First Point meets all of those requirements with a combination of retail space for access to goods and services, access to healthcare and good schools, access to public transportation, affordable housing, and a safe neighborhood. 91% of residents report feeling safer in their Jamboree developments. Housing instability is a multi-generational issue, affecting seniors, adults, and children's alike. We're looking at a future generation right now who are affected by needs as basic as a roof over their heads. As they move from place to place, they have to change schools, leave behind friends, lose stability, and face a disrupted education. With Jamboree Housing, 23% of children attend school more regularly than in their previous living arrangements. Along with our housing crisis, we're facing an environmental crisis. By reducing commutes, we're helping reach California's carbon emission goals. Close access to public transportation at First Point will go a long way toward contributing to the solution. For this reason, California YIMBY supports this project, and asks the council for approval in order to nourish this community. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Isil, I believe it's Miracles? And then, Isil, I believe it's Miracles from Fullerton. I-S-S-U-L, and then M-A, I believe it's R-C-L-E-S, or U-S. All right, next one, Elizabeth Hamburg, followed by Akron McKeal.
Good evening, Council. My name is Elizabeth Hansberg. I'm the Director of People for Housing, Orange County. We're also a pro-housing advocacy group. Again, we're just here to lend support for the fact that we have an opportunity to put 550 moderately priced homes into the housing mix for the residents of Santa Ana. We do have a housing shortage, this housing, I don't want to say demographic, that's not the right word, but this price point is in short supply. And so this is an opportunity to move that, move that needle and increase the supply in the moderate income bracket. So I would just urge you to think about your RENA numbers that will be coming out soon, and that this is one more boxes that we can tick in terms of putting supply forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin, and then Ty Phan?
Hello, Councilmembers. My name is Erin McCall, and I'm from the Orange County Young Democrats. Young people are at high risk of homelessness and on the transition to homelessness. There, a lot of people are having to live with their parents or with multiple roommates. And so this housing project will be able to make it so that that's actually a lot more accessible. And as we were talking earlier today, where we were saying we want to hire more people in Santa Ana, if we make this housing available for people who do work in the community, to be able to live in the community, and to be able to afford it at the jobs, it actually helps benefit and accomplish that goal that you guys are trying to do. So I would just implore the council to really take this opportunity to lead the way to address this housing crisis, because it's only going to get more compounded as time goes on, and developers continue to build housing that's not affordable. Thank you so much for your time, and have a great day.
Thank you. Ty, followed by Lisa Peterson?
Good evening, oh, thank you, Mayor Protam. Good evening, City Councilmembers, Mayor Polito and Mayor Protam Viegas. My name is Ty Phan. I'm a resident here in Santana. For as long as I can remember, I have lived here. I've lived all over the city, my family and I moved a lot, and other than college, I call this my home. And my earliest memories of living in Santana is living in a garage. There are no windows, and I shared the same bed with my sister and my mom. Our home, it's actually near Westminster and Euclid, had a lot of aunties and uncles. Had an uncle who lived in the living room, an auntie and her son in another room, my dad at the time, who had cancer, was in another room, and another auntie in another room. Funny story is, they were not auntie and uncles, but they were other immigrants like myself, who could not afford housing here in the city of Santana. So many of our residents and our community members cannot afford housing. Yet we are the city with the highest density, we have the highest number of renters, and this is a project that not only will bring in affordable housing, it will serve the very community that lives here, the people who've been here a long time, and the community like myself, or myself when I was a kid. As an adult, I recently moved out of my apartment. In a one-bedroom here in Santana, it was almost $2,000 a month. That is an incredible amount to pay for a 790-foot, square-foot apartment. This project does not displace anyone in the community. What it does is that it helps move families, low-income families like myself, into attainable housing, into affordable housing. So instead of living with eight, or nine, or 10 different people in a single-family home, what they can do is move into a one-bedroom, into a two-bedroom, so that you have space to breathe and room to grow, and to be productive members of the community, rather than spending $2,000 a month on a one-bedroom that you share with five other people. I know that the parking situation has been a concern for the city council, and I know that here, Jamboree Housing has gone above and beyond what they needed to do to ensure that we have parking for our residents. Instead of just one parking space, they've provided shuttle service as well as valet, something they're not legally required to do because they're great members of our community. What we forget is that the vast majority of low-income communities do not have more than one car. So to apply middle-class standards with two or three cars per household to low-income and very low-income communities just doesn't make any sense. So I really hope, and I implore that you approve this item, because I really hope that you worry about and think about housing for residents and not housing for cars. Thank you.
Jose Trinidad? Claudio Gallegos?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jesse Lopez. As a resident of Santa Ana, I am here to voice my approval of the First Point project. We need leadership to help address the issue of affordable housing, and the First Point project would create 552 affordable homes for families. This is a moral issue, and we cannot be more concerned about parking, or whether people have a place to sleep at night or not. Thank you.
Claudio, followed by Tim Pham, followed by Dan Lee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm back here again on behalf of Congressman Lou Correa. Dear Mayor and City Council, the housing crisis continues to worsen in Orange County, and in Santa Ana specifically. This has created unstable housing situations for our children and their family, as well as an increase in homelessness. The city of Santa Ana has continuously acknowledged a need for more affordable housing. According to our city's housing element, 58% of Santa Ana renters pay more than 30% of their income on rent. These conditions lead to a number of hardship for families, including not being able to afford other necessities like food and healthcare. And while the city has taken great strides in addressing the homelessness crisis, the need for more affordable housing remains. The First Point project before the council tonight represents a real opportunity to improve the quality of life for low-income Santa Ana residents by providing more than 550 high-quality homes for families. Jamboree Housing has a reputation of quality, affordable housing with services that help transform lives and communities. They are a trusted member of our community, from Cornerstone, an affordable family apartment community in Santa Ana, to the much anticipated Santa Ana Veterans Village, that will serve over 75 homeless veterans in our community. First Point will be no different. As a representative of this community and as a constituent of this city council, I urge you to approve this affordable housing project that our residents so desperately need. Sincerely, Congressman Jay Louis Correa.
Thank you, Dan. Eric, Tim Pham, Dan Lee.
Hello, thank you for your time tonight. And my name is Dan, and I've been living in Santa Ana for about 10 years. I grew up here, I have, I went to school, have a college, I have a good-paying job, but I still live with my parents, and because I cannot afford to pay the, you know, more than 30% of my paycheck out for rent and my student debt. And I'm not alone on this. Many of my friends share the same experience, and we are having the same problem. Where do we live now? So I understand a lot of people have concern about the parking lot, but nowadays, people like me, everything we need is in this phone. We have somebody pick it up from driving to deliver food by our door. So car is not a problem. I would happy to trade my car to take the public transportation, pick up a bike, save gas, save money, but I got affordable unit that ride, you know, around the corner of everything. So let me ask you this question, if you're in my shoe, about to start a family, where will you start? Will you live in your parents' garage, or will you live in one of these affordable units? So I do thank you for your support in this project, and thank you for taking the small step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Richards, followed by Michael Wright.
My name is Roger Richards. I'm a local resident and small business owner. It's evident that there's a need for affordable housing in our city, as many other speakers have said. I'm here to support the First Point project on the 2,000 block of East First Street. Size is ideal, it's not going to displace or gentrify any existing residential or businesses, and rehabilitate what to me is kind of an eyesore on one of the gateways to our city. I hope the city council will approve the project, that will serve the community both directly and indirectly. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Michael Sean Wright, and I'm a resident here in Santa Ana. I'm also from the Human Rights Campaign. I have the honor of, on a regular basis, going around our city and doing wound care for the people who don't have a home. As you know, that there are 87,000 people with Section Eight vouchers that are waiting for someplace like this. Santa Ana has carried more than its fair share of the burden of the housing crises here in Orange County, and has made great strides in working to remedy this crisis that we have. We know this area that's right up on First, near the freeway. You know what kind of an eyesore that is, what a pain point that is for the city. What a shining example that we could show the rest of the county, that this is the way you do it. You work with responsible partners like Jamboree to create a housing opportunity that so many people are desperate for. I know that, as I talk to members and leaders of the Downtown Business Association, they are in favor of more housing that's coming to our community, because that attracts business. It's a healthier community, so I thank you for your support for this.
Thank you. I believe that is it. I would now like to bring it to council for discussion and consideration. Who'd like to go first? Counselor Penyellosa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to, you know, listen to, I listened to some of the speakers up here, and, you know, somebody mentioned that this is a small step in the right direction. You know, the thing is that this isn't a small step, because we've been doing giant leaps in the right direction, you know, Santa Ana has. So I don't agree with that statement, because, you know, people come here as if Santa Ana is just not doing much. We've been doing giant leaps for over, for decades in housing units and affordable housing, and we're actually one of 16 cities in the entire state that has surpassed the regional housing needs assessment. The only one in Orange County. So I just wanted to point that out. With that said, you know, there is 8,100 units in the pipeline coming to our city. We're addressing affordable housing. We're the only city in Orange County that is, we're the only, we're one of 16 in the state that have been recognized by the state, that are surpassing our housing needs. Yes, there is a need, but we can only do so much with the resources that we have, and the services that we would need to provide to these multiple units that want to come to, that want to be built in our city. I was looking over the design plans, and, you know, there's, it's still, I haven't, if, I don't know if one of the, or somebody from planning could answer some questions on the, on the parking, the off-site parking? I remember we had a question whether it was going to be paid for by the tenant or by the, by the units, by the, I mean, I'm sorry, the landlord?
Based on the proposal, the site is providing onsite parking free of charge to the tenants. Any off-site parking spaces will be an optional rental space that will have to be paid by the renters. What the applicant is committed to do is to coordinate and negotiate the parking spaces in a bulk rate. They will manage the off-site parking spaces, so tenants doesn't have to deal with the inconvenience of talking to individual owners. They, all they have to do, if they have, they want the option of an off-site parking, they would just deal with the management onsite, but they do have to pay for it as part of their lease, as an optional payment.
It's going to be an additional?
Correct.
Cost?
It's going to be an additional cost to the residents if they choose to have an off-site parking space. They are being provided one space onsite, included as part of their rent.
Thank you, man.
More questions, Counselor Solario?
No questions, but just some comments. First, as Councilmember Penyellosa alluded to, Santa Ana's been doing a lot in terms of housing of all types, including affordable housing. And in fact, really over a two, three-year window, including, you know, this project, we have about 1,500 affordable units in the works. No other community in South County, well, South California can speak to that. So I'm proud about this city's commitment to that, and I've been able to support each of those projects. For me, on the last meeting, we talked quite a bit about parking, and there were some new provisions that hadn't been raised before, that, you know, for me, you know, raised additional questions. We did do innovative things, because I do believe that out 10, 15 years, with things like Uber and Lyft and driverless cars, there is going to be less demand for parking spaces at places like this. But in the meantime, we needed, you know, something that would help the residents that live there. So the shuttle program, the valet program, were things that, you know, the developers early on agreed to in conversations I had with them, and we've only since then improved them. But the last meeting, there was a big question on the second space that they may be able to have off-site. There was talk about a fee that had never been discussed, there was also talk that, you know, to get that spot, the residents would need to find their own lot and have agreements and all this stuff. So the language has been refined to say that the property owner, the landlord, landlord will in bulk essentially buy those off-site units, so that if somebody does need an extra space, they can have it. Another example, too, of an improvement that was made was, you know, if there is a valet or shuttle service, and because it was, it's not 24/7 service, what happens in the emergency after hours? And so we added new language in there to protect, you know, the tenants, that if somebody does have an emergency, they need to go get their car at some random hour, that there would be somebody on the property that would take them there or arrange the transportation. So I think those improvements are all very good. Finally, I think in California and Santa Ana, folks love their cars, and I would say that, yeah, you know, some, you know, low-income folks may have one car or zero cars, but some do have two, three, four, or five. And there are many neighborhoods in this town that are severely underparked, and there are literally daily fights about that. I know the last time, just about three weeks ago, I went to go visit the 911 dispatch center, and that was one of the calls that came in, you know, late at night, and folks were getting ready to go fisticuffs, and they were all calling police officers, and so these parking shortages are real. And guess what? They're in low-income neighborhoods. They're not up in Flora Park. You know, they're not up in, you know, in San Point, or by and larger, or in places like that. So we want to manage it smartly, and it's because of good management and planning on this project that, with everything that's been done, I am in support. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Counselor Vincenzo Miento?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, this project is in my ward, and I want to thank, first of all, Madam City Manager for bringing this back to us under her authority, because I think that, you know, we realize there is a discussion that needs to be had, that's a little broader than just this, this development. But I think it's specifically interesting, because I think what we're all talking about is just balance as well. I think what we've had in the city, and even if you look at just this corridor, the First Street corridor, you have a development that's just west of this, which is Lion, the Lion Development. 1901, beautiful units, market rate, but very few of our folks can afford that, right? Because one bedroom there is probably about $1,800. If you move a little bit further west from that, we entitled a development for Wormers, which is going to be on the old Elks Lodge property. That's about 600 units of market rate housing. That as well is probably going to be at an increment of about 1,800 to 2,000 for a one-bedroom, and, you know, more as you go up to two and three bedrooms. Very few of our families, of our young people graduating college who are trying to, you know, start know, start their lives are going to be able to even rent that. So all we're talking about is balance. We entitled those because we know we, you know, a community needs to have diversity in housing. That's the only way we're going to work our way through this. But the, but the price points for the units that are available here at this site, because they're two, three, and four bedrooms, those really reflect the needs of our families here in town. So that, to me, is something that should be applauded and celebrated, and I certainly appreciate the work that was done because this is a much different project than what it was when we first started. It's evolved into something that I think all of us can get behind, and I thank the applicant, I thank, you know, their staff and Jamboree for working on this. But the broader issue is this, is that I think the young lady who spoke to us, Ty Pham, said it well, and I think she is sort of reflective of what many of the experiences are for folks who live in town, growing up in garages, renting bedrooms, renting, I know a family that rents a closet, literally a closet. And so when we talk about parking issues, when we talk about, you know, living in really difficult conditions, the reason why there's parking issues in some of our central city areas in town is because you have two, three, four families in one house. So that's incredibly difficult to raise a family, for kids to do their homework, for people to grow up healthy, and for there not to be secondary impacts. So these small steps, and I do call them small because, again, relative to what else we're doing, we need to do a lot more. And, you know, we shouldn't be guided by RENA, we shouldn't be guided by other things. We should be guided by our own community standards and our commitment to the families that we represent. They put us in these, in these seats to make responsible decisions for themselves. So I, you know, want to thank our staff for a lot of the heavy work that's been done, and I am fully supportive of this, this development. Thank you.
Councilor Iglesias?
Okay, well, thank you for, for the opportunity to give me, giving me and expressing, I guess would be my concerns and my point of view with, with this development. I understand we do need affordable housing here in our city, but we have a 552-unit project that we are not providing enough parking. And I know that the, the feedback that we've received is that, you know, our community doesn't have cars, our communities aren't going to need cars, our youth are not going to need, you know, a car, they could Uber or use transportation. The reality is they're not doing that. And, and what's going to happen is this is going to impact our neighboring residents that have, you know, their, their homes, their condos, or they have their, you know, their, their houses. So we've asked of other developers, why can't they lower down the number of units? And I know I've expressed this concern with this developer, and what they've said is like, you know, it doesn't make business sense for them to do it and provide more parking. But, okay, so are we here to make the developer wealthier? Because even though it's affordable, it's not going to be affordable. We're still going to have those issues. Because I've asked the question, what is affordable housing? And I haven't been given a number. How much money is that? They haven't, they haven't told me. So in reality is, not even affordable is not affordable, and these are the conversations that we're having at SCAG and with RENA. Even though you call it affordable, yeah, it may be cheaper than market rate, but it's not affordable. And in having 552 units, you are going to have two to three families living in there, and you guys are going to impact our community. So when we talk about responsible development, I believe this project is not being responsible to our community. And like I say, you know, Santa Ana history, it's been like, okay, just come to Santa Ana and just do whatever you want because, you know, the, they're just approving anything. So I, I believe Jamboree has done an amazing job with other projects, and I've seen what they're doing with, you know, in my ward with the Veterans Village, but with this one, I'm not supported because I don't think it's responsible development, and it's not really going to help our community. Maybe at first it may, but then after, they're going to find out that they can't afford the affordable housing. So with that, I just, you know, I don't feel comfortable, and I know many of our constituents have expressed that, that parking is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting the project tonight, but I'm going to have a request of modifications, especially to the exterior of the building. I want it to look like a great building in perpetuity, not something that in 25 or 30 years is going to be tired, old, gated, fading, and, and becoming problematic. But before I state those conditions, I want to first kind of remind us that, you know, we are the fourth densest city in the country. That's easy to forget sometimes, and much of it's due to overcrowding, but it's all due to the fact that people really want to live here. And I guarantee you, if we build more units, they will come. They'll continue to fill up. Right now, we have 8,000 either under construction or in the pipeline. We have to start being careful with this, I believe, because that trend is just going to continue, and eventually we'll be one big apartment. And a community needs more than just dwelling units. So again, I'm willing to approve this project, but in general, I think we have to look at the question of, you know, what else do we want in the city? How do we balance the city? How do we bring, you know, recreational amenities, other attractions, you know, shopping, other businesses, things that'll, that'll balance out the community? Because, you know, when you talk about density, you've got New York City, followed by San Francisco, followed by Chicago, followed by Santa Ana, and then it's Boston. So 13,000 people per square mile is a lot of people, and we know they're here. All you have to do is go out in the street virtually any time of day, you'll see folks around town because of that, you know, very high density. And when the, once these 8,000 units that are in the pipeline are built, again, we have to ask the question, do we want another 8,000 after that? Because they will come, and eventually it costs money to service, to render the services. And so somehow we need to work with our Economic Development Department, with, with our vision of how we can bring more revenue to the city in order to render the services needed so that all these people can have a high quality of life. So having said that, I know that there's public money going into this project. They're getting the density bonus, they're getting the, you know, tax breaks from Sacramento. There's a lot going into it. So I would like to request that as we approve this, we direct staff to work with a developer to make sure that when they come in, that they eliminate stucco and use other finishes such as, you know, brick, stone, wood, other materials, other building materials that are of high quality. Also, I want to make sure that we increase the number of units that have balconies. I think balconies are important. They enhance, you know, the experience for those folks living there. I also want to request that we increase the height of the perimeter walls to eight feet to provide, you know, privacy, and that we break up these walls with decorative design and finishes on both sides of the walls. Also want to request that we increase the size, and again, I'm leaving much is up to staff and staff discretion, but increase the size of trees and shrubs. Sometimes we come with development, and the, the early stuff is just so tiny that, that eventually in 10, 15 years, it starts to look like, like trees, but, you know, initially they're, they're not what you see when you see those renderings from, you know, from artists. Also, look at light colors inside the parking structures. I'm thinking more about security and lighting, make people feel safe, and, and, and work well. I know right now that's not necessarily in the design. Also, I know there's going to be a lot of bicycles here. Let's plan on how we're going to manage the bicycles. I think we ought to have bike storage or, or something that's proactive and not just tell folks, well, put them in the apartment and then use them, you know, bring them out when you can, et cetera, et cetera. So with that, I hope that this will improve the quality of the buildings long-term. I know the light's red. It's probably bin red.
We didn't say anything.
Did, and I appreciate that. I rarely go into the red.
You were on a roll.
But with that, I'm ready to push green. So those in favor, any more comments?
I agree on all those design comments you mentioned, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So do we have a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion in a second.
Oh, second. Those in favor, please push green. So motion passes by a wide margin. All right, with that, let's go on. What's the next item, Madam City Clerk?
60B.
What was that again?
60B.
60B?
Correct.
Okay, I would entertain a motion. Same property?
Second.
Those in favor, please vote green.
Councilmembers Sarmiento and Solario, if you would please vote.
Well, wait a minute.
Yeah, that didn't record properly.
Wait a minute. Do it again.
We'll reset that.
It's the same project.
Right.
So if you voted green before, you should vote green again.
They just have different buttons than you all. More complicated.
He's got buttons on the right and buttons on the left.
I do.
Does that mean he gets two votes? All right, motion passes. We already did 75A, and now where are we?
75B.
75B. This is time placed for the public hearing adopting a resolution for recovery of uncollected costs for abatement of dangerous and abandoned buildings. Let me open up the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
No cards.
Okay, is there anybody that forgot to give us a card but wants to say anything on this? See, no one. I will close the public hearing and bring it to council for consideration. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilor Sarmiento. Those in?
I, I just have a-
You have a comment? Go ahead.
I'm in support of this item, but I just would like to see it more aggressive. I know, I know, Alvaro, you're, I know you're out there, and I know you're, you're working really hard.
But we don't want you to rest.
Going after these, these abandoned properties, but there are just so many. And, and if we could, I mean, I don't know what it's going to take, but just really hammer down on them. They're just an eyesore, broken window theory. They, they, you know, the homeless take over them. And I, you know what? They're transients because they were offered homes when they were cleared out of the railroad tracks, and they refused to take it. So the transients are just, have, have moved in, and it's just causing a lot of problems and just looks, makes everything look worse. So, but that, those are my comments.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please press green. Our next item, that was unanimous, our next item, item 85A. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Iglesias.
So for this item, the, the reason I brought it up is because we had a speaker at our last, our last meeting in, and was it that we met, in July? And, and I've been hearing also concerns about having, not having representation in, in Ward Four and continuing with the, with the commissioners that were appointed by that council member to, you know, to sit on these commissions and, and boards. So my, my ask, when it was Daisy's first meeting, was if we could see what the, I would say what the process is and what are, by law, what is it that we're, or by, or by our charter, what is it that we're required to do when we have a vacancy and then having the, the boards and commissioners appointed to this? Because the speaker brought a very good, she brought a very good point up that it was that if we don't have a, a council member to represent that ward, then we shouldn't be having commissioners either because they're also making important decisions that will affect, you know, the-
There's a suggestion. Can I call Mayor Protem for a moment?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I was going to say, why don't we just take a vote?
Okay.
And remove people unless there's a committee of members of the council. You'd like to make the motion, or I'll make the motion, whatever you prefer. It's your item, Sol.
Yeah, so I would like to make a motion to have those appointed, but is that something that we can vote on right now?
I don't believe you can, and the attorney has stepped away because it's not agendized for you to take an action on it. An 85 item is something where you can just provide direction to me. What I can do is return at the next meeting with an agenda item where you could take an action.
Okay, then do that.
All right, so you have clear direction on that?
Wait, so what was your direction given to staff?
To come back with a recommendation removing all members of commissioners or boards representing, in this case, Ward Four.
Yes.
Okay, so, so bring in a staff report?
And to basically say-
Correct?
I'm, I'm clear now. Thank you.
Okay, so just vacating all of the Ward Four commissioners?
Correct.
Across the board?
Correct.
Okay. I was interested in, there is a commissioner in Ward Four that I'd like to nominate for Ward Two. She had reached out to me.
You can do that separately.
Oh, okay.
We're going to get legal opinion first.
Okay.
Well, you can do that.
It's Alberta Christie. She didn't want to have a lapse in her historic resources commission.
Nominate her now and have her come at the next council meeting and swear in.
Let's do that.
Do you have a vacancy?
Yeah, I have a vacancy. It's expired.
He's going to create a vacancy.
My Ward Two vacancy has been expired, so I wanted to make an appointment to it.
So who are you kicking off?
I don't even-
Nobody. It's a vacancy. Just starting trouble, that's all.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, so we have basically direction, clear direction, unanimous. Do you need a vote?
Yeah, I do want to say something.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Solario.
I personally am not supportive. I mean, I don't mind going back and looking case by case what the commissioners are, but the way that our commissioner appointments work is somebody nominates them, but the council as a whole appoints them. So they're really the council's appointees. And so I voted for them before because I thought they had something to offer. They've been attending. Most of them, to my understanding, are in good standing, so I, I, I don't think it's appropriate, at least in my case. I don't, I don't plan on, on supporting that direction.
Like I said, we're going to get legal opinion, and we'll see it from there.
Well, we'll, we'll figure it out when we vote. Next item, who had the next item? 85B?
I do.
You're on a roll. Go ahead.
Yeah, and thank you for allowing me to be on a roll. Thank you. The reason I brought this up is because this has been coming up a lot, and then you mentioned, Mayor, about, you know, how we're having a lot of housing units being required of the city of Santa Ana. So I requested this to be on, you know, on the agenda, just to make the colleagues and also the public aware of the changes being proposed that could place an unfair and undue burden on our city for the production of affordable housing units. Santa Ana is one of only a handful of cities in, like Councilmember Penialloza mentioned, it's 16.
One of 16.
One of 16 that meets its current housing needs.
Out of 500 in the state.
Correct. So relative to other cities, our city has a disproportionate number of existing affordable housing units with the highest concentration of poverty in Orange County. So since its inception, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which is RENA allocation, has been based on principles of equity, but recently state legislation has increased greater pressure to facilitate the development of affordable housing while taking away local control. So while the Southern California Association of Governments, which is SCAG, and that's where, you know, I'm a representative of this body, within SCAG, proposes regional determination of housing needs, I encourage anyone who's interested in voicing their concerns to attend the two upcoming public hearings. And the public hearings we're having, one this Thursday, and it's going to be in, at City Hall in Irvine. And the other one, I don't know where it is, but I was wondering if this is something that we can put on our website, Madam City Manager, so the public can know where the next one's at? So we could provide input, and we have until the 13th of September as a community to provide input to, to RENA. So what I was, I was going to ask if Steven, since he's our, you know, development- So what I was, I was going to ask if Stephen, since he's our, you know, development, community development director, I always wanted to refer to you as City Manager, to talk about the potential impacts of our city of greater numbers and other pending legislation.
Certainly, one of the, the big red flags that the, the RENA is creating for the city of Santa Ana is the methodology that they're sending down to the cities. HCD Housing and the Housing Group up at the state will plug in a number for the SCAG region to meet. And the SCAG region is from Ventura on south. Once the SCAG region gets that number, and then three methodologies will occur. If, if HCD sends down a number of a million for SCAG, we could be on the hook for as many as fourteen thousand units. If they choose seven fifty, it's anywhere from eighty-two hundred to fifty-three hundred. And if they choose about five hundred thousand for the SCAG region, it's anywhere from twenty-one hundred to five thousand. So the three methodologies will be, will be, those three different calculations will be used depending on the number HCD sends down to SCAG, and they haven't determined that yet. We run the numbers, our staff, men's staff and my staff both have the spreadsheets, we're running them every time we hear a comment to see what kind of impacts it may have to our community. We will also be there on Thursday to testify at one o'clock. OCOG meets at ten, and then the actual SCAG hearing is at one o'clock at Irvine City Hall. You're welcome.
Thank you for that presentation. So with this, I, you know, I just want to see where you guys are at, because I know I'm going to be testifying along with Stephen, so we could have the best numbers that's going to serve our community. So that, that's all I wanted to share with all of you, just to be aware of this is happening, and we need to provide input or else the state's going to be mandating what we are going to be doing as a, as a city. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Now our next item, eighty-five C, Councilor Pena Loza.
Thank you, Mayor. I brought this item forward because one of the, the, you know, things that I noticed while, you know, running for office, I really dove into the city charter and the operations of everything, and I realized that there was a lot of, I know we've, we've updated it before. From what I heard from our, our city attorney and staff is that the last city charter was amended back in two thousand and seven by the, by the then mayor and city, well, it's the same mayor, but the then city council. And there's just, there's a lot of language in there that I wanted to kind of look at and to bring back to the voters of Santa Ana at a future date to eventually see if those amendments are possible. So I just wanted to see if we could, you know, bring back some kind of review committee to look at these. Some are minor, some are probably more controversial with certain people, but yeah, just something like, like pronouns in, in the charter. There's a, you know, our, our city manager, our city clerk and our city attorney are referred to as he throughout the entire thing, and I mean, all three of them are women, which I'm proud of, and that, that should be more inclusive when it comes to that regard. The other ones that are a little more, I'm sure are going to be more sensitive are just the qualifications of members for city council and, and election cha, chapter in, in our charter. Everything from, from residency to, to cooling off period, I think this should just, you know, be termed out entirely. Those are just my opinions, so I'm probably going to get heat for it, but I think that there, there's a lot of things that we could dive in and change for the, for the better good of our city. And just wanted to bring that forward, to, to put a committee review together with staff, council, members of the public, see what we could, we could, what changes we could make that would benefit everybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, maybe what we could do as, as, as an adjunct or, you know, as part of your request, I know there was a charter review commission that was put together years back, and I know that they addressed a lot of, a lot of these questions, so maybe if we could not revive it, but bring back those findings in addition to maybe some other updated findings that we may want to have looked into, but just to see, because there was so much work that was done by that committee, I remember, and it was a pretty large binder of information, so just something to include.
Thank you, Councilmember Sarmiento. Yeah, the review was, the big review was done in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, and a couple of years back, there was an ad hoc put together to look at those same recommendations, but I feel like we should do both, look at the recommendations made then, and, you know, it would be, I think, in, in the best interest of the city to really look at the, at the recommendations made then and possibly look at other possible areas where we could revise it.
It's up to you.
We could certainly return with an item with suggestions and recommendations for you. We can also do a little more research on the, the last charter committee that did, it was in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, and see how many recommendations did, did not make it past the voters or was not put out to the voters, to provide all that information for you.
Okay, yeah, if, I, I don't know if anybody else has any, any comment on it?
Good idea.
And even if it's not right now, they could comment in the weeks and days to come.
Okay, so, well, I wouldn't, it wouldn't be a motion or anything if I wanted to make that.
Just direct, stuff, information will come back. You want to lead this effort, the rest of us will communicate with you on it.
Okay.
And when you're ready to recommend something, bring it back.
And just for the record, this does not reset anybody's clocks. That, that, I want to make sure that that's put out there.
And Mayor, we have someone who wants to speak on this item.
You want to speak, go ahead, come on down.
Hello, Mayor, Councilmember Staff, Chris Schmidt. I'm also part of an organization of residents called Connect Council. We put on several community forums regarding topics in the city. Two years ago, when district elections was a big hot topic, we put on a forum for the community at Delhi Center. The clerk of the council at that time, Maria Hazer, came out and gave a great presentation explaining it all to it. There were a lot of leftover questions, a lot of people asking questions, well, why is it only required thirty days as residency requirements to run? Where if you're appointed, you need to be here for a year, you need to show residency. There were some discussions about other things. If people have term limits, how come eight years later they can run again? Term limit means you can't run anymore. When you're the president, you get two four-year terms, you don't get to run again eight years later. So I fully support this item. I hope we do get a commission or ad hoc together, look at modernizing the city charter and updating our election code. I don't, I believe the state election code applies to general law cities, but the city of Santa Ana is a charter. I think we can create our own code regarding a residency requirement, but I'm sure our city attorney is more familiar with this than I, so I hope we look at that. So thank you all very much.
Okay, so with that, next item, I believe eighty-five D, Councilor Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just briefly, this is, this has to do with the MHA, the Mental Health Association of Orange County Operations on Main and specifically South Main, which is a little south of Warner. I am the ward representative there, and I want to thank Councilmember Solorio for also fielding many of the complaints that we've received from not only residents in the Delhi Neighborhood Association, but also the businesses along South Main. And I can't recall how many businesses have called to say that they've had a huge, huge impact from the, from the MHA facility. This goes back to, you know, probably the early two thousands, I see some language, and thank you, staff, for providing me with some context and background on this, where there was a good neighbor policy that was agreed to back in two thousand and one, where there were some, you know, good faith efforts that were supposed to be made on helping reduce the impacts and mitigate some of those, some of those uses. This, this by no means is to attack the noble effort that this center and facility is trying to do, which is to address a mental health issue. The problem is, is that I know that we've had, you know, it's the only mental health facility in Orange County, I think, so we've had it here in our city alone, and we've sort of shouldered that responsibility. And, you know, Mayor Protem was reminding me that he actually worked there. So it's been a challenge to make sure that good, you know, support has been provided to folks who do have mental health issues, but I know I receive photographs often from Chris Schmidt and, you know, others who sent me saying, you know, these are the impacts that are going on, and it's affecting not just, again, you know, the residents, but the businesses. And my direction is simply, and my, my, the intent and purpose of my putting this on is just to get some options from staff as to what next steps we could take. I know that in May of last year, the, the county renewed this use for the next three years, so we're in the first year of three. But to the extent that they haven't followed some of the, some of the policies that we've set forth, you know, do we have any remedies? Do we have any ways to address this? And so, you know, if you could simply just come back to us with a staff report and have us consider what we can do, maybe some findings of what the, you know, what the logs say as far as responses and calls for service and complaints, but I'm sure that there's a pretty large volume of complaints that we've received as a result of this. And again, I think it's a noble use, I think it's a noble purpose, but, you know, is it in the right place? That's another question we need to ask. This coupled with the armory when it opens up is a real, real difficult, it creates a very difficult dynamic for folks who live in the Delhi neighborhood and the park there. So please, that's my only request of staff, and I'd appreciate some, some options.
Comments on this, Councilor Pena Loza?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Sarmiento for bringing this item forward because it's a, it's a definitely a nuisance surrounding the, the mental health facility down on Main Street. I've, I've heard it from the CVS Pharmacy that's there, the McDonald's, the Wells Fargo across the street, all those businesses and neighborhoods are being heavily, heavily impacted by the, the nuisance that comes with the facility and its, the poor operations of it. I, I would even like to take this item a step further and look at the numerous county properties that are, that are causing a lot of the same nuisances and, and, and problems associated with their facilities. Just getting here, driving down Santa Ana Boulevard, driving past the courtyard, you know, there, there is obvious problems that are spilling out into the streets and, and causing a lot of this, and, you know, I, I just feel like the county has been very negligent in addressing and, and, and having a well-run operation with, when it comes to these facilities. So wanted to add that, and thank you, Councilmember Sarmiento.
Okay, Councilman Solorio?
Yes, I just want to say I also completely agree, and I think we've given the, the property owner and leadership years to try to improve the situation. It has not gotten any better, and I'm sure there's plenty of documentation, emails, photos, et cetera, showing what a problem it is. And we've also seen with, you know, a problematic motel on South Bristol, as well as the property on Hazard and Harbor, where through the fantastic staff in the city attorney's office, we've been successful in addressing this, these types of nuisances. So this is one area where we got to make, make a new effort this round. And the related but unrelated thing is the armory, and I, you know, it's right next to some preschools, elementary schools, a lot of issues, and I know the county, again, is trying to open it up early, and I'm sure then they'll try to keep it open later, and we can't keep saying yes, it creates just nothing but negative impacts for, for our community. And, you know, there's kind of a shared responsibility between the, the county, the state, but also us a little bit, because we either pay one of the service providers their Mercy House or have an influence there, so, you know, we really need to address that. I know if and when there is another, you know, county replacement shelter, part of the, the deal was for the armory to permanently shut down, but that doesn't mean that, you know, we should keep allowing it to be extended so many, so many additional days, days and months that create more problems for our community.
Mayor Protem? No comment? I think that's the input on that item. So let's go on to the next.
We have a speaker there for that item as well.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Chris Schmidt, again.
Thank you all. I first like to thank Councilmember Sarmiento for agendizing this item. Vince, it's been several years, there's been multiple meetings at Delhi Center with MHA, the county, neighboring businesses, residents from the Delhi community. We talk about the same thing over and over and nothing changes. I think MHA is a worthy nonprofit, they provide services that are much needed to people in our city. Unfortunately, it's not what happens inside the building, it happens outside once they close the door and everybody has to leave. They go to the surrounding businesses and set up camp. So anything we can do to try and address this issue, I think it'd be a great impact, help out the Delhi community, one of the most, one of the three communities in the city of Santa Ana where people of color were allowed to buy housing early in the forties and fifties. So anything we could do to help the people of that community would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Iglesias?
I just, I want to thank Councilmember Sarmiento for bringing this up, because I, I know the community there has been very concerned about what's going on with the, I would say, with, you know, with the effects of that business being in there, because even though it's a county-operated business, but they really don't enforce a lot of the things, and it's an overflow into our community. And we also have a school there that's really close to SCAG, and I don't know if you mentioned this, but, you know, those parents too, they, they feel it, because you have the McDonald's there, you have the CBS, and you have individuals just walking around, and some of them are not, you know, some of them are under the influence. So hoping that we could have serious conversations with, with the county of Orange and to see how we're going to address this, because also what happens is this individuals, and I don't know if you mentioned this, but they go also into the railroad tracks, and they're the ones that are causing that nuisance there too. And also, you know, the, the kids that walk there, they're the ones that are walking to Saddleback High School, and they're, they're afraid too. So even though, you know, on one side we do have the bike trail, which is part of Parks and Recs, but on the other side we have the, the railroad, and, and it's just one thing that adds to another, but I, I believe it all stems from, from this location. So I want to thank you again for bringing it up.
Thank you. So with that, I think we move on to the next item. And is that city, oh, we have a special Housing Authority meeting?
That's correct.
So I will convene that meeting and entertain a motion on the regular meeting minutes, any excuse absence quarterly report, items one through three. Can I wave a motion? I'll second it. Those in favor, please press green. Motion passes. Now we're going to go to our, no, no Housing Authority member comments?
None.
Let's go to the city manager comments then? Seeing no city manager comments?
Mayor?
There's a business item.
All right, do we have members of the public to speak?
We do not have any.
Okay.
We do not have, but you have an item number four, business calendar for housing.
All right, so let's entertain a motion on item number four, part of the business calendar on the Housing Authority, was it?
That's correct.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll move it second.
Those in favor, please press green. Motion carries, seeing no Housing Authority member comments, city manager report, now she's ready.
But I don't know, Mayor, was that a hint that you don't want me to have any comments? Just a couple of items. We are having a mariachi festival on Saturday, September seventh, from two PM to ten PM in downtown Santa Ana, Sycamore Street and Fourth Street. We also have a tree care event at Centennial Park, and everyone is invited to come and volunteer and administer tree care in Centennial Park this Saturday from three to five. And another thing that's very important is we are seeking volunteers to be part of a census outreach video. The purpose of this video is to inform the community about how important this once-in-a-decade count is for our city and for the amount of funding that we receive. So we're going to be filming a brief video on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, and are looking for both English and Spanish-speaking volunteers to star in the video. So stop by any time between eight to four, and it will be at City Hall. And if you have any questions, you can contact Daisy Perez. Her email is dperez@santa-anna.org. And I only have one more item, and I just wanted to let you all know that we have been working diligently, our IT department, to enhance the city's website. So we have a new website. It has a robust database-driven content management system, so it includes expanded sections for open government, and there are several data sets that have been added, and GIS mapping data has also been made available to the public. It also includes a dashboard page that has data about businesses, permits, police incidents, homeless data, and the vehicle incentive rebate information with a direct link. homeless data, and the vehicle incentive rebate information with a direct link to neighborhood initiatives and to submit certain types of requests. This is already out there and we continue to work on improving our app, which we hope to roll out in October. And that's all.
I asked city clerk earlier, do you have any public comments? She said no.
Not for housing. We're going back now to the council.
Well, public comment to us means public comment. Anyway, she's new, she has about 40 of them. So, we're now going to call on them. Paul Berry, but go down to two minutes, please, because these are a lot of speakers.
Three minutes.
No, no, just tell your comments. Paul Berry, followed by Peter Katz.
That's on me tomorrow.
Or if not, then Jorge Rodriguez. Come on down, Peter.
Yeah, tonight I just want to especially thank Councilmember Vince Sarmiento for his diligent pursuit of defending the immigrant community in the city. You, as a council, are responsible for representing all the residents of this city. That includes legal, illegal, homeless, and recently incarcerated that have been released. There's 328 million Americans, 43 million are foreign-born, that's 14% of our population, and they start up 40% of America's small businesses in this country. With the recent rise of white supremacy, neo-Nazi movements in this country, I think we need to do more to stand up for our immigrant community and protect them where they live and reside. So, we need to speak out more and defend the people that live in our city. As a soldier, I fought throughout the world to defend the freedoms of the people that come to this country. I would swim the deepest ocean, climb the highest mountain to come to this country. And you know, we, as a people, are proud to take in people to live and work in this country. They contribute so much to American society. And I, as a soldier and as an American born here, welcome everyone that comes to this country looking for a new life. So, thank you so much, Vince.
Buenos a todos. Mi nombre es Jorge Rodriguez. Soy líder de la Iglesia del Señor San José y con la congregación de OCO. Do gracias a Dios por todos ustedes, el concilio, y al ingeniero Galvez en especial, por su trabajo y por pensar en nuestra comunidad del Civic Center. Que sea una calle más segura, más hermosa, con las cuatro glorietas. Esperamos que nuestro concejal, David Peñalosa, nos acompañe en el día de la inauguración. También queremos poner en el lado de las glorietas un, en banquetas, nombres de personas que se, que representen unidad, respeto y justicia. Espero que puedan aprobar ese detalle y muchísimas gracias a todos ustedes.
Good evening, my name is Jorge Rodriguez and I'm a leader at the San José Church with the organization, with OCO organization. I thank God for you, the council, and especially Engineer Galvez for his work in thinking about our community, Lacey to be safer, to be more beautiful with the four roundabouts that are there. And we hope that councilman, our councilman, David Peñalosa, can be there for the ribbon cutting on that date, the inauguration. We also like to have on the side of the roundabouts, on the sidewalks, the names of people who represent unity, respect, and justice in the city. I hope that you can approve this detail. Thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Irene Bautista? Irene Bautista is next, followed by Fatima Pakay.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Irene Bautista. Soy líder de la Iglesia Episcopal del Mesías en la Ciudad de Santana. Y con la organización de OCO, la razón por la que estoy aquí es para agradecer la aprobación de las cuatro glorietas en la calle Civic Center en la comunidad de Lacey. Gracias al concilio y el ingeniero Galvez por su trabajo y por pensar en tener un vecindario más seguro y más lindo. Aprovecho este comentario para decirles que la comunidad ha decidido honrar a personas que se han preocupado por nuestro vecindario. Y también recordar a quienes han dado la vida para que la comunidad tenga más dignidad y justicia. Es por eso que queremos pedirle la aprobación de unas pequeñas placas al lado de la banqueta. Muchas gracias, que Dios los bendiga.
Gracias. Fatima?
My name is Irene Bautista, I'm a leader of the Episcopal Church in the city of Santana and OCO organization. The reason I'm here is to thank you for the approval of the four roundabouts at Civic Center in the Lacey community. Thanks to the city council and Engineer Galvez for their work in thinking of us and having a better, a safer neighborhood and a more beautiful neighborhood. I'd like to take advantage of this time to let you know that the community has decided to honor people who have been concerned for our neighborhood and also to remind, to remember the people who have given their lives for the community, for it to be more dignified and just. This is why we'd like to have the approval of small plaques near the sidewalk. Thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna have up next is Fatima and then we're to have, followed by Quanari Morales.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Fatima, también soy miembro de OCO, de la comunidad de la Iglesia del Mesías. Y soy una neighbor que vive allí en la comunidad de la Lacey, entre la Washington y la French. Y para nosotros es un gran honor que nos hayan aprobado ustedes como councilistas glorietas porque hemos tenido muchos accidentes y hemos estado mirando que la comunidad necesita que estén más aprobados todos estos que son mejoras para la comunidad. Yo les quiero pedir también a nombre de todas las personas que vimos en el, en the neighbor de la Lacey y la Washington, que nos hagan el honor de estar, por ejemplo, usted, David Peñalosa, que es el concejal de nosotros, y también que nos dejen poner algunos nombres en las glorietas que se van a poner por gente que ha muerto ahí en la Civic Center y por gente que ha trabajado en alguna de las iglesias por muchos años, más de 40 o 50 años. Y eso es algo nada más que les quiero pedir. Gracias. Y mi hija va a hablar.
My name is Fatima and I'm also a member of OCO and the Church of the Messiah and live at this Lacey neighborhood by Washington and French. And it's an honor to have these roundabouts there installed. They will prevent many accidents, people have been injured there. And the community needs these improvements. And I'm asking on behalf of the Lacey and Washington neighborhoods, if, when this gets inaugurated, if our councilmember, Sir Peñalosa, can be there. And these are needed, these roundabouts are needed. And we'd like to have them in honor of people who have given their lives, people who have helped in the church for 40 or 50 years. And now I'll have my daughter speak.
I just wanted to say thank you and for helping my neighborhood safe and my school a better place.
Great. What was your name again?
Quanari.
Quanari?
Quanari.
Quanari. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Vincent Navarete, followed by Milton Linares.
Hello, my name is Vincent Navarete. I'm OCO leader and leader of the Episcopal Church. The community is very afraid of family separations and violence around the city. And that tells me that we need to be closer than ever, not to absorb more budget, to enforce the law, but more budget to build our families and neighborhoods to be safer than ever. We want to thank city council, Engineer William Galvez, for the hard work in the Lacey community. Thank you for the next coming four roundabouts on Civic Center. We hope that our neighborhood will be safer and more beautiful. The community has decided that the roundabouts have a symbolic name at the corner of the street, near the sidewalk. That is why we want to ask the council for approval. We also want to request the presence of councilmember David Peñalosa on the inauguration day. We want to remember the unity and more dignity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Pedro Salgado. Oh, Milton? Oh, sorry. Estoy adelantando.
Good evening, mayors and councils. This is a great city. My name is Milton Linares, member of board of the French Park Plaza and Civic Center Drive. I have been 23 years living in a beauty city. But let me tell you something, and I need to translate because I need to explain better in English because my English is not perfect. Mi nombre es Milton Linares, miembro del board, represento 52 familias de condominios aquí en la Ciudad de Santana. Tal vez se enteraron que en días pasados debido a la delincuencia que está sufriendo nuestra comunidad, tuvimos que llamar al Canal 52 Telemundo para que nos ayudara a hacer público el incremento alarmante de robo en la propiedad y vandalismo que está sucediendo alrededor del vecindario. Antes que nada queremos darle las gracias al oficial López, Alex López, de la policía de la Ciudad de Santana, que a causa de las noticias, del reportaje que se hizo en nuestro edificio, él ha tomado cartas en el asunto y está prestandonos un buen servicio. De verdad, agradecemos lo que está haciendo la policía en nuestro vecindario. Y sin embargo, no es suficiente porque la misma policía nos ha dicho que es muy poco lo que pueden hacer debido a las nuevas políticas de justicia que se han implementado a nivel local y estatal. Y si es eso, le agregamos que son muy pocos oficiales comparados con la población de Santana. Por favor, escuchen bien esta parte con atención porque es la parte que a ustedes les toca hacer como representantes de nuestra ciudad. Primero, recuerden que en su propuesta de campaña para incrementar los impuestos de venta en la ciudad, ustedes prometieron más seguridad. Ya están cobrando ese incremento, sin embargo, no se ha sabido que haya más policía, por lo tanto, esa debería de ser nuestra prioridad. Segundo, en nuestro vecindario...
Ya, ya, se me hace favor de concluir porque se puso la luz roja.
Rapidito. Segundo, en nuestro vecindario gran parte de los delitos son cometidos por desamparados, por lo tanto, la policía los arresta y los mete a la cárcel y los, el sistema los libera inmediatamente por ser desamparados.
Muchas gracias.
Queremos que todos paguen por su delincuencia.
My name is Milton Linares, I'm a president of the French Park Plaza Association. I'm here representing 52 families that make up our neighborhood. You may have noticed that in the past few days, due to the crime that's been happening in our community, we had to call Channel 52 Telemundo so they can help us to make this public, the great things that are happening with theft, property theft and vandalism that's happening in our neighborhood. First of all, we'd like to thank Officer Alex López, who's helping us in this. And due to this news report, he's come to us to ask us how he can help and there's been an increase in patrolling in our neighborhood. We'd like to thank the police for what they're doing in our neighborhood. However, this is not enough because the police has, even the police has told us that there's little they can do due to the new justice policies that have implemented at the local and state level. So, there's too few officers compared to the population in Santa Ana and we've called the police, we have to wait a long time. So, please listen to this part because, pay attention to this part because this is what you can do as representatives of our city. First of all, remember that in your campaign proposal to increase taxes, the sales tax in our city, you promised better, higher security and you are charging us for this tax increase and we have not seen an increase in police. So, this should be a priority. Second, our neighborhood, a lot of the crime is committed by people who are homeless. So, the police arrests them and they, instead of putting them in jail, they release them again. So, this is what happens with crime.
Pedro Salgado is the next speaker and then followed by Ben Anacio.
Buenas noches y gracias por el tiempo que me dan. Mi nombre es Pedro Salgado y también soy miembro de la mesa directiva de la persona anterior, Milton Linares. Y sí, hoy hemos venido a este foro público no es solo por los delitos que últimamente hemos estado sufriendo en nuestra comunidad, sino porque hemos investigado, hemos mirado que estamos viviendo en una ciudad que es demasiado peligrosa. Es una zona muy mala realmente, sino también con, no solo en la ciudad, sino del condado, incluso posible del país. Sino pueden mirar en las redes sociales, todo esto es verdadero. Mi pregunta a este momento es para ustedes como alcaldes y concejales, qué están haciendo al respecto o qué van a hacer para quitar la imagen que tiene nuestro vecindario. Ya lo mencionó el señor Milton, hemos sido víctimas de vandalismo y robos en nuestros vecindarios. Sin embargo, hay otros delitos que se han incrementado en nuestra comunidad que son tomar bebidas alcohólicas, hacer drogas y tener sexo en las calles, en los estacionamientos de nuestro vecindario y que muchas de la gente que sale de los bares y cantinas que están allí cerca del centro, que como lo sabemos, en fines de semana encontramos envases de cerveza, vinos, agujas con las que se pican, drogas, incluso cosas que usan para hacer sexo en los estacionamientos y las calles de nuestro vecindario. Ustedes como representantes de la ciudad deberán de ordenar a mismas patrullas que cuidan de esos bares y cantinas que patrulla nuestro vecindario también ya después de las 11, 12 de la noche, porque es cuando pasa todo eso después ya, que está todo eso pasando. Gracias.
Gracias.
My name is Pedro Salgado and I'm also a member of the board from Mr. Milton, the French Park Association. And we've come to this public forum not only for the crime that we've been suffering, as he mentioned, in our community, but also because we've seen the internet, you can see it on the internet and all the pages that we're living in one of the most dangerous areas, not only in the city, but perhaps the county and even the country. If you don't believe me, you can check for yourselves, you can check on the websites because this is true of this alarming situation. My question to you is this, what you as a mayor and council members are doing about this, what are you going to do to erase the image that our neighborhood has? As Mr. Milton mentioned, we've been victims of vandalism and theft in our neighborhood. However, there are other crimes that are, have been increasing in our community, like drinking in public, doing drugs and having sex on the streets and the parking lots in our neighborhood. And many times this happened during the weekend after 11:00 p.m. because that's when people come out of the bars in downtown. And how do we know this? Because in the weekends we find empty beer and wine containers, the needles that they use to inject drugs and the other things for sex in the parking lots and the streets of our neighborhood. U.S. city representatives should order that these same police officers that are patrolling the bars, they also patrol our neighborhoods after these bars close and so they can avoid, prevent these crimes from happening and order your officers to find the people as the lay stipulates when these people break the law.
Thank you. Is it Chavez or Chaver?
Yes. Benacio Chavez. Mi nombre es Benacio Chavez y quise hablar después de estos dos señores porque yo fui víctima varias veces. Primero me robaron el remolque para carros, el robo de batería de mi camioneta. Y lo más triste, fui víctima dos veces en un carro que me robaron. Pongan atención, les voy a explicar porque fui víctima dos veces en el mismo carro y solo pude reportar uno a la policía. El primero robo en mi carro, lo cometió un delincuente cualquiera y lo recuperó la policía. En realidad no perdí mucho, el delincuente solo me destruyó el switch, me robó algunas cosas, sin importancia, y destruyó el asiento trasero de mi carro. Mis pérdidas no fueron más de 150 dólares. El segundo...
El segundo robo fue más grave, y fue cometido por alguien que la ciudad le dio licencia para robar. Me refiero a la compañía de grúas, que arrastró mi carro, y que si me atrevo a decir que fue un robo, es porque es la verdad. Por unas horas que la compañía tuvo mi carro en su yarda, me estaba cobrando la cantidad de quinientos noventa y siete dólares, por unas horas, quinientos noventa y siete dólares. Y si no, y si no es porque lo amenazó de llevar esto a la corte, me lo rebajó a quinientos dólares. Y por la intervención del oficial que estaba investigando el caso, me lo rebajaron a cuatrocientos dólares, y todavía sigue siendo un robo. En el pasado, es sabido de las arbitrariedades de estas compañías de grúas que operan en la ciudad, e incluso ha habido hasta arrestos de choferes por levantamientos ilegales de carros. Estas prácticas deshonestas no solo me pasan a mí, sino aparte de la comunidad.
Por favor, puede concluir porque ya...
Señor, yo lo esperé tres horas, usted no me puede esperar tres minutos?
Lo que es justo es justo, y todos aquí tienen dos minutos.
Sí, señor.
Muchas gracias, el señor va a interpretar.
Señor este, Peñalosa, esta compañía está en su curidección. No me dejaron terminar mi discurso, pero si quieres, se lo paso. Por favor, investiguenlas, investiguen estas compañías.
Let me make something clear for the public, that any things like this, I haven't received any emails, I don't know if my council member, my colleagues here have received any emails, but we would be glad to look into these problems if you would write us. So, go ahead, Sasaf.
My name is Benacio Chavez, and we've been living these problems in our neighborhood. I wanted to speak after these two gentlemen, because I was a victim of theft by towing of cars and the theft of the battery of my truck, and the saddest thing is that I was a victim of theft of the same car twice, and I'm going to explain to you why I was a victim of the theft of the same car twice, and I could only report one of them to the police. The first theft of my car was committed by a common criminal, and the police brought it back or found it, and I didn't lose much. This criminal only destroyed a switch, stole some things that are less important, and destroyed some of the backseat. My losses were less than a hundred and fifty dollars. The second theft was much, much graver, and it was done by somebody that the city gave a license to steal. And I'm talking about the towing company that towed my car, and if I say this is a theft, it's because this is the truth. For the few hours that the company had my car in their yard, they were charging me the amount of five hundred and ninety-seven dollars for just a few hours there. And if it wasn't because I threatened to take them to court, they lowered the amount to five hundred, and because of the officer involved, they lowered it to four hundred, and that's still too much. In the past, there's been some outrageous practice by this company that operate in the city, and I want to give the rest of this information to Peñalosa, who is my councilperson.
Thank you very much. Marco Villo is the next speaker, followed by Lasten Palomino, first initial N.
Hello, my name is Marco Villo. I'm a resident of OREI Civic Center, and we have the same problems, and what I've been seeing, I've been living in Saraná for more than thirty-five years, I've been living happy in the area, but what I've been seeing right now is getting worse and worse and worse. When I came to the meeting, I've been here for three hours, I've been listening how you defend, defend the business, the cannabis, the cannabis business, and I'm surprised, and I'm impressed, that when you talk, look like you work for them. And I won't be surprised that you are part of the association, Marihuana Association, because the way that you talk. And it's so sad to see you guys talking about MSHA, the place for the mental people, try to look for solutions, you try to penalize them, because they're not, they're not getting along with the people who live around there. I live in downtown Santana, and we've been having a lot of problems, and you should be aware. We don't have to grab you down, because if you read the statistics, you can check, you can check where is the rate on crime. And we've been having a lot of crime in my area. This is not the first time, you can hear it. How many times this gentleman was, he was having trouble with the breaking ins, but no one, even when you call the police, they come to you, and what happened, they don't want, they don't want even make a report, while they say, oh, if we take the report, you gotta go to court. And then you say, okay, what can I do? You know, leave it alone, because nothing is gonna happen. This is what deserves, are you talking about, we don't have any problem with those marijuana dispensers? I remind you, we were having one in Maine and Washington, and we were having a lot of crime around.
That's an illegal one, that was not a legal one.
Well, but you will see, you can see a people who goes there. I got one right now in Forest Street.
That's an illegal one. Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Thank you very much.
You don't have time for this, but it's ridiculous to hear you, because you...
No, sir, we have three hundred and forty-three thousand people that live here, and we don't have a crystal ball to check on everyone. That's why you are free.
Well, you should be more, you should be more, you should be more close to the people, because your job is to go to the people.
We are here for the people, and we're listening to you.
I don't think so.
You know what? I haven't received an email from you, and I'd be more than happy to help you.
I'm not gonna make emails to you, because you can check on the rates.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Palomino, Lasta Palomino, followed by Postillos Azucena.
Excuse me. We came to your together as a group.
You came together, the next speaker?
Yes, but we asked specifically, but in a specific order, and it seems that the speaker order is not in the order we asked for, so I'm asking if I, as part of this group, can go first before this gentleman?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Byron Lopez. I am a member of the Orange County Democratic Socialist America, and also a member of the Rise Up Willowick Coalition. The Rise Up Willowick Coalition is a group of residents, community members, and organizations that have created a collective vision for Willowick to ensure that this community asset, the Willowick Golf Course, that this community asset of a hundred and two acres of publicly-owned space addresses the needs of current residences, residents. We are unified, organized, and ready to continue to build a powerful vision for future generations in our communities. We are here today to invite the Santa Ana City Council elected officials to work with us to ensure that our community, that our community's voice and vision is truly honored and leads through development of our, of our public land. Our communities, we reject the proposals of private stadiums, luxury market-rate housing, and a tech hub. We reject proposals that are not community-led and informed. We have the right to be authors of our own development and growth. Willowick's future development should be decided by the people living and working in this community, not by private developers. Our communities need affordable housing, not market-rate housing or luxury apartments. These developments, development projects hurt our neighborhoods, leading to an increase in rents, cost of living, homelessness, and displacement. We demand the city to invest in the future of current residents. I have been a resident of Santa Ana since two thousand and six, when we were forced our home in Garden Grove. Luckily, I was very, we ended up moving to a mobile home park, where it's pretty much a scam, where they not only had to pay land rent, he also had to pay mortgage rent. So I am very much been affected. I live right next to this, to the Willowick Golf Course, that your city, along with Garden Grove, is planning to develop, and I do not want to have to lose, I do not want to lose my home, and I will do anything in my power to make sure that we stay there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucerna Basilio, followed by Byron Lopez.
I am Byron Lopez. You can strike.
Maria Sanchez. Robert Estadon, come on up.
Sí, buenas noches. Señores concejales, mi nombre es Navor Palomino. Sí, vengo a hablarles de la tierra pública. Nuestras tierras públicas presentan una oportunidad para mitigar las desigualdades ambientales, perdón, no es desigualdades, disparidades ambientales y económicas que enfrentan los residentes a largo plazo en Willowick. Estas tierras, pensamos que están protegidas por la ley de terren, de tierras excedentes, la ley de California, sí, la cual establece que sean prioridad las viviendas accesibles, terrenos al aire público, o parques, sí. Necesitamos muchos aquí en Santana, sí, y estamos viendo que estos terrenos, este proyecto que tienen pronosticado, es de un duro impacto para la comunidad. Estamos amenazados por el desplazamiento de este proyecto. Queremos que nos ayuden a conservar y hacer más viviendas accesibles, ya que tenemos un gran problema aquí en Santana, las ventas son muy caras. No tenemos oportunidad de ayudar a nuestros hijos estudiantes que ya van a la universidad...
Gracias, ya está roja la luz, pero gracias.
Disculpas, señor.
No, no hay problema, va a traducir el señor.
My name is Navor Palomino, and I'm here to talk about public lands. Our public lands represent a big opportunity to help the environmental disparities and economic that are facing our residents, long-term residents in the Willowick area, and these lands are very useful, and they're, I believe that they are protected by the California Surplus Lands Act, and these provide, these should be a priority to provide accessible housing, open spaces and parks, which is very much needed in Santa Ana, and we see that this project has been placed here, it's going to have a hard impact to our community, and therefore, this is a big project that will give us more accessible housing, because this is a huge problem, the rents are too high.
Vincent Navarrete, come on down, if we already called you, come on down.
Hi, my name is Marla Sanchez, and I live on Gunther Street, near Willowick, and my grandfather, when he came home from the Korean War, he bought that house with my grandmother, and he always was concerned about the encroaching high-rise and luxury apartments coming from the Disney area and from behind, from what would happen to Willowick, you know, that it wasn't going to be taken into consideration what the residents that live there now, or even back then when he was still alive, what was gonna happen to us. He was always afraid we were gonna lose our house, and now I see that happening. I live there with my grandmother now, I'm her caretaker, and I also have my kids at home with me, I'm a single mom, low income, and I don't know what would happen to us if we would lose our house. I would really like to see whatever development happens there be something that is actually gonna benefit the community that lives there. I'm asking you to work with the community, to respect the existing community, so that whatever happens there is uplifting and empowering us, instead of making it harder for us to have a good quality of life in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Vincent.
Hello. My name is Sean Drexler. I'm a member of the Rise Up Willowick Coalition. I'm here because of the threat posed to residents in the Willowick area by private developers. As a coalition, we believe that open space is an incredibly valuable community asset that should benefit the residents, families, and youth living in the Willowick area. As of now, Willowick Golf Course is zoned as open space. We therefore urge the city of Santa Ana to not obzone the use of this public land and not to give it away to the development process. In Irvine, thirty percent of land is dedicated to parks. Santa Ana has four, so this really isn't a big ask. In Costa Mesa, my home, I've seen the devastating effects unchecked development can have on families. I've seen residents, some of my own family, displaced and forced to move outside of the city, but I've also seen success. In my city, we were able to save a childhood favorite of mine, Fairview Park, from private development, so I hope we can do the same here for Willowick. It's not a big ask, it's pretty easy, the land is already public, let's keep it that way.
Hi, I'm Nina. I'm also here with the Rise Up Willowick Coalition, and I've been knocking doors and canvassing the area surrounding Willowick, and what I'm finding is nobody knows that this development is even happening. This is right in their, like, backyards, they don't even know about it. And so this is moving along really quickly, I don't think anyone realizes, at least the neighbors don't have any idea how quickly this is going along. With the current timeline of the city, Garden Grove, and Santa Ana, by the fall of two thousand and nineteen, that's this fall, this coming year, a hundred and two acres of our public land will be sold off to developers. This is not years away, as some council members have argued. The aggressive development process is harming our communities now, and we demand that the city of Santa Ana work with us to ensure that community voices lead on what is created on our public land. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robert Escandón. I am here as a member of the Rise Up Willowick Coalition. I was born and raised in the Santa Anita neighborhood, and I've lived there for fifty-six years. I began getting involved in my community when I was twenty years old. I coached a youth softball team at Santa Anita Park every summer for forty years as a volunteer. I saw how important it was for kids in this neighborhood to be involved in community sports, youth sports. Programs have open space to play and have available important resources provided by the Santa Anita Recreation Center. They created safe space for kids and families to enjoy, open space in our community. When the city of Santa Ana decided to disinvest in our community by limiting our access to our park, taking youth sports and activities away, and leasing our public land for private profits, they neglected and deeply hurt our community. As a result, our kids and their families didn't have many other spaces available to enjoy. Willowick is a hundred and two acres of possibility for open space and parks that will benefit our families, our youth, and all residents in Santa Ana and in Garden Grove. We envision open space with activities for residents of our community, a space that can provide peace and tranquility in a heavily populated neighborhood. Willowick is an opportunity to provide necessary green space that will address our physical and mental health, well-being. As a Rise Up Willowick member and resident of this community, we believe that our public land should be prioritized to address our needs and wants. We deserve and want open space and parks that we can play, learn, and be together as one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Guerra, and I'm here with the Rise Up Willowick Coalition, and I'm also a resident of Santana. I'm here today because this city council right here has the ability to ensure that the a hundred and two acres that currently make up the Willowick Golf Course are used in a way and developed in a way that actually benefits the residents that are living in the area. Currently, this community and Santana as a whole is in dire need of well-maintained parks, of well-resourced parks, and they're also facing an acute affordability, housing affordability crisis, which I think it was brought up many times throughout this meeting, and has been brought up many times during previous meetings at the city council. So, it does not need luxury apartments or market-rate housing, it does not need private stadiums, it does not need any type of development that's gonna prioritize profit over the actual needs of the residents currently living in the area, and it will not, it does not need any type of development that is gonna result in the displacement of all the folks currently living there. The Willowick site is currently zoned as open space, and the city council has the ability to continue to zone this space in a way that will prioritize the needs and the wishes of the community that are living there. Anything, as the, as the city council works with the city of Garden Grove to figure out what type of development is gonna go there, or how they're gonna use this land, it has to prioritize, prioritize the needs and wishes of the residents. Any development that will result in the displacement of folks will be a council that is acting in direct opposition of the residents that are living there and of the residents of Santana that it's supposed to be representing. Thank you. [applause] what type of development is going to go there or how they're going to use this land, it has to prioritize, prioritize the needs and wishes of the residents. Any development that will result in the displacement of folks will be a council that is acting in direct opposition of the residents that are living there and of the residents of Santana that it's supposed to be representing. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jesse Lopez. I am a member of the Rise Up Willowick Coalition and I am here tonight because I am concerned about the lack of transparency regarding the 102 acres of publicly owned space known as the Willowick Golf Course here in Santana and the Santa Anita neighborhood. I urge this council to not exclude community participation and to collaborate with local residents, many who had no idea about the plans to develop the area. As a Santana resident, I asked, I asked this council to adhere by the Surplus Land Act, which can only benefit our community across racial and economic lines. We fully expect elected officials to include us in the decision-making process, especially when those decisions have repercussions that extend far beyond revenue for the city. We demand a community-driven process for the development of our public land. The changes made to the 102 acres of the Willowick site can potentially change the place a lot of people have called home for most, if not all of their lives. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Rodriguez. I am a resident of Santana and a member of Rise Up Willowick. Today, members of the community have come together to ask Santana City Council to prioritize residents and their families by working alongside us in the development of the Willowick site. As of now, 102 acres of open land are zoned as open space by the City of Santana. The communities surrounding the Willowick site are classified as park poor, as well as Santana as a whole. Parks make up only 4% of the total land in Santa Ana, that's approximately an investment of $47 per resident, as you said, over a city, a city with over 340,000 residents. As opposed to the city of Irvine where 30% of land is dedicated to open space, which is approximately $250 of an investment per resident. Along with open space being scarce, housing and lack of affordable housing affect everyday residents and their families. 102 acres of public land should be used to address the needs of residents, not prioritize profits. Our communities should be authors of our own development. Please work with Rise Up Willowick, a coalition of residents and community organizations to address community residents' needs. Thank you.
Any other speakers? I believe I've gone through the whole list. Dale, come on down. You come right after Dale.
Dale Helvick, Santa Ana resident for 29 years. I gotta say that I agree with you, Councilman Penalosa, on the RINA numbers. I think one out of 16 cities is pretty amazing for California. And if you break it down further, I haven't seen the, the list of the 16, but I do know Santa Ana's number, and it's 1,237% above the goals that they set for 2021. And we've met that in 2019, 2018 numbers, so it's only going to go up. And I would like to talk to you, Councilman Iglesias, about the Thursday meeting, because I think the fact that we exceed the goals by so much so early on ought to have some kind of rollover effect, because if you take a look at the other 400 cities that did not make their goals and they continue to not make their goals, then there's no, no real incentive for them to even try. And so we ought to be able to somehow incorporate the, the good work that we've done and the other 15 cities have done in that process. And along that lines, I'd also like to thank you for showing up and talking to residents of our community over the last weekend. We really appreciate it and we look forward to continuing that process. And the common feedback that I got has been, where's been Mr. Solario in this process? I don't have an answer for that because I don't know where he's been, so we'll see. Thank you.
Last speaker. Come on down.
Mayor, council members. I missed the vote on our East Side First Street project, but it looks like Irvine Company's coming closer to Santa Ana more and more. 20 years ago, we were against building all these high-rise apartments because the city can't handle overpopulation. But you guys will probably have to deal with that in the future, some city council members will be gone, I'm sure there's going to be few, future lawsuits. Number two, I would like to see some of you guys walk down the bike trail or the railroad tracks early in the morning where Saddleback is and where the kids have to walk down to MacArthur, MacArthur Junior High School and see how bad it is, okay? And then walk down MacArthur Boulevard towards Fairview and see how bad where the kids have to go towards Seagerstrom with the traffic. Somebody developing those areas wasn't thinking, sorry to say that. There is going to be a kid that's going to get hit and the city will pay for it. Putting those homes in that direction right there was a terrible mistake, I hate to say that. But go down the railroad tracks, it's getting worse and worse. And then some other friend told me that East First Street, going towards Tustin, there's more and more people coming from LA over there. So, and then with the new rent freeze that's going on in Sacramento, all this new development, I don't see how it's going to help out the poor people. I really do not see how it's going to help out. It's just, to me, it seems like the Irvine Company's paying off some people here in the City of Santa Ana to take care of it. I thought that bill was dead. You guys voted against it, but no, it hasn't come back because everybody's afraid of Sacramento and all the stupid politicians up there in Sacramento, they don't do nothing in Sacramento. That's all they do is promise their communities, we're going to do things for California, and it never happens, never. But I'll tell you one thing that's good, since you guys have closed down that place over on, on Harbor Boulevard by Santa Anita, that little casino over there, all that area's crime has dropped down amazingly. But the one on East First Street is still going strong, right next to that, that hotel right there. And it's going to keep on going strong. You know, Walters back in the old days had it right, have the patrol units go through there, turn their lights on, flash their lights around, like they used to do at Mr. J's, and I remember those days, and I know all the officers who did it. Have a great week, we'll see you in two weeks.
We've already done the city manager report, because we did it earlier. One more speaker? Okay, go ahead.
At least, one more and Chris again, I believe. Sir, thank you, Mayor and Council, my name is Manny Escamia, I'm a lifelong resident of the city. Here to ask that Willowick remained zoned open space. I'm really hoping that this current council worked with the colleagues over in Garden Grove and with the County of Orange to create a regional park. I think it's going to be our last opportunity to hit the goal that we need for two parks, two acres of park space per thousand residents as our city's stated goal. I think I've done right, it really can be a regional attraction, so the city's been looking for some kind of regional draw, and I think if we do it with the right sort of gardens, art exhibits, things that actually make people want to come down there. Willowick is strategically located along that rail line and it can provide public access to open space for the entire central core of the city. And I also just want to say that a lot of people think about Birch Park as being the city's oldest park, but what we forget is that William Spurgeon, 150 years ago, set aside park space, park space at the current courthouse with the imagination that there were going to be the county seat. So this was not something that was easy to do, was not something that was in the cards, but he believed in a vision. And I think as Americans, we have to do things that are hard, not that are easy. And I just want to say that the park space there is highly needed, and I just encourage people to really think about that space as a regional park. Thank you.
Chris, come on down.
Good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. The five gentlemen that spoke earlier about all the crime that's happening, it's happening, we see it every day. And I see it on the apps, like the Ring app, Neighbors, I'm going to go down, Stranger at My Door, uh, somebody stealing packages from my porch, garage break-in, attempted break-in, lady going through my mailbox, Stranger at My Door, druggie at front of my house at Harbor and Kent. We're always told if you see something, say something. And we're saying things all the time, but nothing's changing. I don't know why I have to go down Harbor and McFadden and see all the people in the River View Shopping Center when the police substation is there. Why do I have to send multiple emails about things? There is still graffiti on my tennis courts in my park, three years going on. Juan, you and I have had that discussion numerous times. Connie Hamilton used the city app to report a pile of trash off of Eddinger, she got an error, so I reported it. The city came back to me and said, we're not going to take care of it, contact somebody else. So multiple emails went out today. We see stuff every day and we're reporting it, and somebody is not doing their job because it's not being cleaned up, and this needs to stop. I'm going to give you an example. There's a family in my neighborhood, the mother in November suffered a serious health issue. For the last six months, she's been in the hospital getting care. But in January, her brother applied for a handicap parking spot in front of her house because she's in a wheelchair now, and somehow, her application disappeared. And I had to make several phone calls and emails today. Somebody simply wants a handicap parking spot in front of their house for their mother who is now in a wheelchair. And somebody at City Hall lied and said it was never turned in. This needs to stop, and it needs to stop now.
Thank you. So now we've already had city manager report, so I believe we now go to council comments. Councilor Solario.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things, first on the, on the Willowick thing, I do want to thank all the residents that, that spoke on it, and I know there are, you know, various processes underway to, to, to work on that. I would ask, you know, the staff to, you know, reach out to the group, also reach out to the Santa Anita Neighborhood Association and figure out how to involve them a little bit more closely in the process. Even though there was some outreach done last year, it really wasn't deep or rich enough and, you know, pretty far away from this point in time, so we need, you know, renewed efforts, efforts there. I want to commend the staff here that work with the two Summer Night Lights programs that, that, you know, went on over the summer, you know, through neutral ground that operated, the one in Salvador Park, and then the Madison Park Neighborhood Association that worked on the other one in, in their part of town. They were well-executed, well-done, fantastic turnout, and, you know, folks really stepped up. And I see, you know, Daisy who's out there often with, you know, with the census booth, so I really appreciate, appreciate that. And then Parks and Rec and PD and everybody that's supported that. And then finally, a request to our, our city manager. I know one thing that we have done to try to improve the situation down the road, at least in our parks, is the, the expansion of the contract that we have with Allied Universal, and I know as soon as sometime in early September, that may come online, and I know there were several on the council, you know, including Councilmember Penalosa as well, that talked about maybe we could co-brand them so that there could be a city emblem on their uniform and car, and I think they've been willing to do that. So it would be good to do a little write-up so we can know what that's going to be like, that their scope, when they're going to start, what can the community expect, so we can share that with, with others, because I think that is one bright spot in what we're doing. But finally, I agree with the residents, crime really, and a lot of it homeless-related, is out of control, a lot of stuff doesn't get reported, there's a lot of theft, a lot of issues going on, and it's unbearable. And I think we got a little bit of a flare up today or two, but we really need to step up to the plate and finish up the homeless plan that I know staff is working on, and I know we're talking about, you know, more of a zero-tolerance approach and enforcing anti-campy顿 ordinances. But we've had that shelter up for a while now, we're paying good money for that, so we can enforce the law, and we expect it, and the community expects it, and, you know, we're running out of excuses, you know, before it's, well, we don't have a city manager, we don't have resources, or the judge won't let us. No more excuses, we gotta, you know, get to work and, and make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Penalosa, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the, the Lacy neighborhood residents that came out tonight to speak. Very nice to see them. I was able to have a conversation with them a couple of weeks ago at the, we had a traffic meeting over in the French Park neighborhood. It included the Logan neighborhood, the Lacy neighborhood, downtown, French Park, and we just discussed about the numerous traffic and crime concerns in their neighborhoods. And, you know, they're, they're legit concerns, and, and I'm happy that they were here tonight to, to advocate for their neighborhood. I want to, Madam City Manager, if you could work with staff in, in having, maybe set up a meeting to go over the, the roundabout plaque that they're requesting, I think that's something simple and we might be able to, to see what we could do in regards to that and memoriam of, of people involved in that project, neighborhood leaders. I also wanted to invite everybody out. It's one of, celebrating, helping to celebrate our 150th anniversary, we are having a pool party at Memorial Park, my neighborhood. And it's Saturday, August 31st, from 3:00 PM to 4:30 PM. It's going to be really fun and exciting, and it's going to be free to anybody that wants to come and hang out and take, go for a swim. We're gonna have free ice cream and churros. This is thanks to the Santa Ana Police Department that, that donated their, their winnings from, they, they were able to put together the most, they won the contest in gathering school supplies for our back-to-school bash that the Santa Ana Unified School District put together. So they donated their prize, their prize of free, of an ice cream party to the, the kids of Santa Ana for our community. So that's going to be really cool, and the best part of it is that I'm going to be there. So, you know, come, you know, splash me with water, yell at me, whatever you guys want to do, I'll, I'll be, you know, I'll be there hanging out. So excited to see all of you guys. And apparently, there's going to be a DJ too, so it should be really fun, pool party to celebrate our 150th anniversary. With that said, have a good week and thank you.
Do we get to dunk you, are you going to be like in a dunking machine or something?
Sure, now you can just push me in the pool. I'll wear a suit too, just to make it, you know, fun.
Keep the suit on.
It'll be a swimsuit. All right, Councilmember Iglesias, please.
Well, I just want to report on the meetings that I've attended in the past month, which was on July 17th, I attended the Orange County Sanitation Administration Committee meeting. Wednesday, July 24th, it was the Orange County Sanitation Board meeting. Thursday, July 25th, I attended the special meeting for OCAG meeting, talking, so we can talk about the RINA numbers. And Thursday, August 5th, I attended the SCAG meeting in LA. And I just want to thank all of you guys, especially the public that's come here and, and provided us their input and their concerns on what's going on in their neighborhoods. And as you can see, the common theme is, a lot of times is the, the homeless issue. And I know we're trying to make a lot of beautifications and a lot of nice additions to our city, we're investing so much money in our parks and in our, in our community, but we fail to, we're addressing it, but we fail to find the solution to addressing the homelessness issue. And it's not even the homelessness issue, it's the, the issue of how we're going to deal with these individuals that don't want help. Because I know the ones who want help, we've already been, they've already been helped, we provide them an opportunity to have shelter at the, at the link, a 200-bed shelter that we already have, which in my understanding, we're not even at capacity yet, they still have some empty beds. And it blows my mind that we can't enforce our laws and, you know, these individuals, when they do this, you know, go around and the cult team goes around and sees individuals in our, in our neighborhoods and in our businesses, they ask them if they need help, and if they say no, then they just let them go, you know, unless they have like prior warrants or some type of, I guess criminal activity or something, then they'll, they'll cite them, but then they get released right back into our community. So it's kind of like we're, we're just playing this tag kind of game with them, and we're not really addressing the issue. And we're spending over six, I believe it's like $16 million in, in addressing the homelessness issue, but I think we could do so much more, and why are we spending money before, I mean, trying to fix our, our parks if the homeless, especially the ones who are drug addicts, the ones who have mental issues, you know, they're in our, in our parks and in our community, and, and our community doesn't feel safe. As you heard from the neighbors here in, from the Logan neighborhood, they're very concerned, and their, their biggest concern is about these individuals that go into their private residence that are, you know, doing this, they're, they're committing crimes. So I, I'm hoping that one day, soon rather than later, that we are able to address this and we come into an agreement with the County of Orange, because I know the County of Orange Supervisor Doe is doing the best that he can, but I'm looking for the day that we are going to sue the other cities, you know, file that lawsuit against them, because they need to be doing their fair share, because of Santa Ana, we've done our fair share. So I just want to thank everyone that's here and hoping that we, we, that we all have a good weekend. I'll see you guys in about... I'll see you guys in about another two weeks, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Vincenzo Armento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, you know, I want to begin by, by thanking staff, and, you know, I think in between our break that we had, this meeting just seems a lot longer than it is, just because we had such a long layoff, so even though this is a relatively short meeting, or not as late as we've gone, but I did want to thank them for putting together the blessing of the city. And I thought that that was probably one of the most inspiring moments that I've had on the council, where we had people that were multi-denominational, coming and speaking, in very inspiring words to say how much they cared about the city, and, you know, they were from different faiths, different walks of life, different languages, but they all had the same theme and the same message, which is that we love our city, and that they were proud to be here, and that they were happy to be supporting our efforts. So good work to staff on doing that. I think that was one of the, one of the moments I think I'll recall most from these, these celebrations. I also wanted to, you know, say that I know I attended Senator Umberg's grand opening for his office, that he, his district office, that he opened up at the train station, so it was an amazing piece of work that was done. I know Public Works staff did that in, I think, less than 28 days, so, you know, good work to them and staff, but the station is looking great. It looks really, really like an amazing site and an asset that we haven't used for a while, so that's, that's certainly a hidden gem that we'd like to make sure people get to visit. Peter, thank you for your words. Thank you for your service. Thank you for always being here, you know, and, and helping us, and, you know, and again, inspiring us to, you know, make sure we do the right thing. Right next to Senator Umberg's office this Thursday, at the train station on the 22nd of August, at 5:30, we're going to be holding a forum on just talking with people in our city about their rights, and many of them are immigrants, many of them are legal residents, many of them are undocumented, and so there's going to, and I want to thank Madam City Attorney, who's going to donate her time to come speak with other experts from the Mexican consulate, other service providers, to just talk about what our city ordinances are, and I think it's, it's helpful, more than anything, just to have a conversation and to talk about what the legal, you know, rights that we have as folks here in town. So thank you to all of you for that. And on Thursday, that morning, at 11:00 AM, we're going to be hosting a, at the Orange County Water District, a briefing on a contaminant that's raised its ugly head in our water system, PFAS, and they're, we're inviting the entire Orange County Congressional delegation led by Congressman Ruda. And so it's going to be a very informative discussion, because as we move forward, you know, again, informing the public about the safety and the, you know, the well-being of our, one of our most important resources, water, is going to be an important discussion to have. But with that, I just wanted to bid everybody a good night, and thank you for all your help.
Thank you. Mayor Protan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Saturday, El Salvador Park, Artisha Pilar had their movie night at the park. It was very nice turnout. We saw the movie Selena. You know, I'm very thankful for them, for their leadership on, on having these community events, so I want to thank Ruby Wu and Lucy Sorlozano for, for putting this together, and the rest of the Neighborhood Association. It was a very, very nice turnout. I also want to make a quick comment on some of the gentlemen or the constituents that were here, you know, you know, making comments regarding their safety and what's going on in their neighborhood, and I just want the public to know that this council member here, that if I receive an email from you regarding any kind of complaints, especially about your safety, I always write back. I write back, I'll make a phone call, I follow up after there's an initial contact, and then I follow up on the follow-up. And people here that, that work here at the city, and the people that have dealt, or that have worked with me in the past, know that I, that's how I work. So, you know, to come here and, and to make some accusations that we don't do anything, all of the council members up here are very, very good at what they, what they do. I believe they all follow up as well. I can speak for them, but I'll speak for myself, and we're here to help. That is our job. So if you have a problem, feel free to write, feel free to call, and, and we will address the issues. There is a lot of people in this city, it is, it is very dense, but I want to assure you that we are here to, to help, and some of the situations are very, very tough, because regarding jurisdictions, some of them are the state, some of them is federal, but understand that we will do our best to address any issues that you may have. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, this means it's going to be adjourned till our next early-scheduled Bruce Dunham's memory, if we can please do that, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
One of our former stellar code enforcement managers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So it's a former city employee, Bruce Dunham's, a veteran of the Vietnam War, worked for the city of Santa Ana for 32 years, also serving as a mentor and instructor to staff and the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers. His focal instruction dealt with a strong belief in a customer-driven approach. Bruce was also a professional drummer with a passion for creating and playing music. He was a significant component of the jazz festivals held in the Santa Ana Zoo. He passed on July 31st, 2019, and is survived by his wife, Debbie, his son, three daughters, and his grandchildren. He will be missed and remembered. Rest in peace.
Thank you.[1722.91]